Hello, how are you?
So. This is old. This is one of the old models.
Things down a little bit.
You already have one.
Keep us on our toes.
Yes. Oh, wow. It's so. So having your back to you in case they have something you need. You gonna need drugs for that?
I do have drugs. Sometimes it works a lot. I need to go to the drug appointment. Thank you, Teresa.
So what is happening is that attorney is calling people and.
It doesn't matter. Mostly through.
And they don't want it on TV.
I'm sleeping at the moment. I hope. At least when I left her, she was still sound asleep. Your cell phones to stun.
Oh, wow.
And it's scheduled.
Okay, so there isn't a schedule. Okay, never mind. I was thinking about a different order.
One's 2018 and one's 2020.
I'll go right now.
Let's see what he did on the next one. Did he do an A and B or? Yeah, they're both scheduled. It's just a six and one half a decimal.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about the wrong order.
Oh, okay.
It's more. It's comforting. It's more frustrating than it does. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the council study session for November 26th. We'll start off with roll call. Teresa?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Present.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Here.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any announcements or reports or presentations, so we will pop into the agenda items. And we have an agenda change. We're going to move the Blue Ribbon Committee update up to the top of the list here. We are ready for you.
Hey.
Not bad.
Well, we really appreciate you accommodating our request so we can get Pat on the road and back here early in the morning.
That is so kind. I can't believe it.
So as you all know, I'm Dana Hindman, Director of Administration. This is Pat Bailey. She is our community health consultant that we've been working with now for going on almost two years. And one thing that has come out of the Healthy Auburn effort that we have embarked on was the desire for the City Council to pass a resolution related to community health. And we have some ideas around that. Some of those ideas stem from the committee, some of those ideas stem from our staff, and some of those ideas stem from other cities that have similar community health resolutions within their cities. In your packet, I provided something you probably haven't seen in a little bit, but back in 2015, we did an exercise that created a strategic plan. And the number one strategic plan was around community health. And if you remember from Pat's presentation last time she was here, she made sure to point out I'm going to which page. This is page 182 of your agenda of the City of Auburn's Strategy Matrix. And goal number one was to increase our Healthy City Index by a particular percentage by 2020. And Pat has worked very hard to keep all of her efforts related to those strategies outlined in the strategic plan there. So Pat had some opening statements for us, and then I'd like to just kind of take the temperature of the council, if you will. Oh, did you see what I did there? Around the draft language that we have started with, and that really is just a starting point for what possibly will be a resolution that we might want to put in front of you next year.
Thank you, Dana. I just wanted to say, in the past, almost three years now, the Blue Ribbon Committee for Auburn, the healthiest city in Washington 2020, has been successfully coordinating, developing, and implementing programs to improve the health of this community. And we couldn't have done it without the tremendous support of this council. At the very beginning, the mayor and I sat down and reviewed all the data. And as you know, it showed great need for improving the health of this city. But why should the city lead the way in promoting health, as we are about to ask? Well, you've heard me say this before, I know, but the health of a person or a community is not based solely on healthcare, which I thought for years it was. It's based because the doctors and hospitals are only about 20% of what makes each of us healthy or a community healthy. It's based on socioeconomic factors like jobs, income, education, and safety, community safety, which is about 40%. And then health behaviors and choices, like healthy eating and exercise, like alcohol and drug use. That's about 30%. And then physical environment, like keeping housing safe in the community. So about 80% of what makes us healthy is something that the city works with daily. So to some degree, it's city responsibility. And as Dana mentioned, health was a priority. When you sat down with your strategic plan in 2015, it was number one. Now we feel the time has come to make health a top priority in Auburn and a top priority in Auburn city government. The people in Auburn are ready. Let's make this a champion city for health. As you all know, a healthy city is a successful city.
Thank you, Pat. So I would like to direct your attention to pages 176 and 177 of your packet. And hopefully, you've had a chance to look over some of the initial draft language that we have started with. And I am receiving language and input from the other departments as well, and I think we can very easily tie in a lot of the things that we do and a lot of the things that we have done to make community health a priority. For example, I received some really great input from Jeff Tate and his staff regarding the adoption of the comprehensive plan and the fact that one of our seven policies are related to wellness within the comprehensive plan, the award-winning comprehensive plan that Jeff was so happy to point out. And all of the other departments around the city, too, have a community wellness or a wellness component to just about everything that we do. So I guess at this point, to not really dwell, because we just are in the initial phases of working on this resolution, is really just to see if we do have consensus from the City Council to continue to move that forward and, you know, continue to work on actually having council action related to our community health initiatives. And of course, field any questions, if you will.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'm on this committee, and I've been, we've been working, all of us have been working very hard on how were we going to be able to measure what we've been doing. And we had, on our last group committee, we had one of our members speak out and says, you know, we're almost towards the end of 2020. And we started out saying that we would have something in place by the year 2020 when we started. So we decided to kind of look at what we have been doing. And then we had someone from the county, King County Health Department come, and they shared with us what other cities have been doing. And so I immediately told Pat, let's do an ordinance. And then, because they brought examples of ordinance and resolutions. And with us having a real high obesity in this city, I thought that it would be nice for us to be able to measure it with doing an ordinance. And I had forgotten about what we did back in 2015. So this is really refreshing to be able to look back and see. So that's, as Mr. Baggett, he's also on the committee, and he's been working hard on these issues as well. So this is why we came up with an ordinance, but I'm glad that the mayor has taken a step to do more about this than what we were anticipating to do.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you. Will the November 2015 report be updated?
Are you talking about the matrix?
I'm talking about 24th November, 2015. Did I say it a different year?
No.
Oh, then I messed up. 2015, so we must have some data.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly do that.
And that way, we can have a new baseline to start.
I think with all the participation that Councilmember Trout Manuel and myself, among others, that have participated in this committee, it's been more like a journey. And we've seen so many different facets of this process that I do believe that there's probably going to be an end-of-period report of some type, but to bring us all up to speed with all of the things that have taken place with the committee. But I agree with Councilmember Trout Manuel that we've made great strides with a lot of different areas of health and with the participation of our health network and all of the schools and everybody involved in this process. It's been a great process for us, I think, as a city. And we're moving forward as we speak. And I think that we'll have something to say at the end of 2019.
So just as a reminder, this strategic planning report bill that you're referring to, this was the outcome of our council retreat. That was the SWOT analysis that was done, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that council had identified during the retreat up at Wesley. So we can most likely have a session where we're talking about the SWOT analysis again and see if we have moved. But it wasn't a report done by somebody else. This was just a note taken from our session.
Councilmember Wales has a question.
Back to what Bill's alluding to and what our mayor's alluding to. I think that it was done in 2015. It might be nice to bring it forward and kind of reactivate it and give it a fresh look and inculcate it into the other document that we started working on at our last retreat so that it's more current. Can you tell me, Deputy Mayor, what the nine major health issues are?
Nope, not off the top of my head.
I think that I'd like to see a little more specificity in here. I don't think it would take more than probably a sentence or two. And I would like to also see, in very generic terms, how we're going to assess some of that. Very, very generic. Because I think that that would be useful. In addition, I'd like to see some of the data that we have collected over this last three-year period of time to support this.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Margot, for mentioning that, because I did walk over to Pat and asked her about, I didn't see certain things in here that I felt that we needed to include in here. And this is just a working process, as Pat has told me. So I did voice my concern about that, that I would like some of those things on here, too.
Councilmember Pelosi.
One of the things that has really always gotten my attention, is we had a former council member who was always talking about, don't just put your report on a shelf and forget about it. We've got to, we have to continue to reform this report, update it. And that way, it's a useful tool for the council.
Well, I'm glad you said that as well, because in National Leaks the City, I'm constantly talking about this within our groups and bragging about this committee with the Hilo program, because they're also wanting to know how, what we've been doing so that they can do that within their city, some of the council members on healthier city for 2020. So, but they're looking to do it some other, you know, in a further distance. So we're working, I'm hoping we can get to it so I can present that to National Leaks the Cities as well.
Councilmember Wales.
One of the things that I would further, there are two things I'd like to see further, and I wish that Jeff Tate were here. But in, and you are aware of this as being deputy mayor, as being a member of the Pierce County Public Health. Every one of their policies that they adopt in Tacoma has to have a checkoff in relationship to public health. I think that we need to look at that being added. And the other thing that, and I'm glad that Dana's here, and I wish that Jeff were here, is I think that somehow we need to build this into the block grant. That, I'm not saying we share revenues or whatever, but I, we went to a great deal of trouble, Yolanda and I, on working on what we saw as three priorities of dental, so on and so forth. And I think that we need to add a fourth one to that that relates to health and safety of the community. I think that also serves as a precursor if we're going to, down the line, look at the concept of going for a police station and courtroom, roads, safety. That gives us the platform to broaden what we could possibly impact.
Councilmember Holman.
Just a little feedback, if I may. I was out having breakfast in the community last week at one of our local restaurants, and who should come in but Pat Bailey? And sat down with the owner of this restaurant. And she was doing more listening than preaching, listening to this owner's difficulties in getting menu items that appealed to his customers, sourcing the types of ingredients that he, she was doing the listening and encouraging the owner to find acceptable answers. And it's just the absolute way to lead. And that addresses Section 1, Items A and B, adding to community health objectives to their business goals, and actively encouraging and promoting health programs in the community in the business sector. Brilliant. And it was just, you weren't cajoling, you were encouraging and supporting. And I, you know, sorry for spying on you, but I couldn't help it. And it was very encouraging to see the work that you were putting in on this.
Thank you.
But I still enjoyed my pancakes.
Councilmember Wales has another question.
I would be interested, or a statement, if you could, in the next couple of weeks get me an idea of what we're spending this current year extrapolating through December, on what we are spending for things like, are the community meetings, secretarial staff, your time? Because if we're gonna, I'd like to see us end up really pulling that into our block grant, our community interventions and whatever, and we'd like to see the amounts.
Okay, that's a.
And again.
Kind of a complicated ask.
No, 3,000 foot.
Okay.
Okay, 3,000. Or maybe 35,000. Yeah, I don't.
Okay, I'll go to 35.
One of the things I want to point out is that this committee is made up of a lot of different organizations that contribute an awful lot to the events and all the activities. And they donate an awful lot of products and their time and resources to these activities that we participate in. And they are part of our business community, and they are definitely involved. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Drive safely.
We will now get back to the original agenda of Item 3A, which is the 2018 Auburn Farmer's Market. Hey, Sir Daryl.
Well, what a perfect segue when we're talking about community health, because our farmer's market is a piece of that, I'd say pie, but that probably wouldn't be healthy. So it's a piece of that picture.
The carrots are.
So carrots are, yeah. So anyhow, I'm joined this evening with Amanda Valdez, who coordinates the market for us and does a great job on those 18 weekends and all the efforts that go to make it actually successful, or way beyond the 18. Sundays were, that's kind of the show, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. We have a real brief power point. We promised at the beginning of the year when we said that we were going to make the decision to move the market, that we'd kind of come back and talk about either our success or our failure. And here we are. Fortunately, it's the success side, and I think you guys will see that in this presentation as well. So anyhow, the mission is basically healthy and locally grown products, education, convenient, healthy foods, vibrant gathering place, so all the things that we talked about, a healthy community, it's actually meeting at the market. And that mission hasn't changed from when it was begun, however many years ago, Bill can tell us. But many years ago, we really wanted to have a place both to have healthy food and a healthy place for people to get to know their neighbors. Amanda's going to go over kind of what changed, but obviously, the location changed and some of the numbers, and I'll spew back in there as well. But we're really excited about the move. Obviously, it's 18 Sundays, and a pop-up art project appeared, which was the carrots on the trees out there. And as soon as that happened, people kind of started talking about, oh, this is the new site for the market. So it made a lot of sense and also tied in greatly to the rest of the park activities there. We heard it in the library, the museum. Their audience attendance increased as well. Playground people drifted over. We started a program with the Auburn Bocce Club, where they were doing free lessons on Sundays. So it really created a great energy in the park, which we played off of as the season went along. Amanda?
So to be able to put on this market, we have some great funding from all around. One of our biggest funders is a grant through King Conservation District. We also had an InKind Media sponsor this year, 989 The Bull, which was really exciting. The Auburn Arts Commission and For Culture, and then a few sponsorships here and there from commercial businesses around Auburn. We use these funds to mainly market our farmer's market, an aggressive advertising marketing campaign. We also use these funds to be able to bring in those education pieces, like Cisco Morris, Marianne Benetti, and Hall Bank, to do some gardening, canning, and healthy living demonstrations.
I'm assuming that was a grant and not a rant. Is that correct?
Oh, sorry, did I misspeak? Yes, grant funding. These were some of our promotional efforts, again, through the aggressive marketing campaign. We were very excited this year. And of course, the fun carrots that Daryl already mentioned, those were a great addition to the new site and really put us on the map, I think, at the park.
Yeah, it was an easy thing for us to sit around as a staff and play off when you have things like beat and turn up and very excited and heads up. It's just too simple to, for us to waste a lunch hour on creative ideas. So it was kind of a fun theme change for us. And the marketing, and it's mainly from the money from King Conservation District funds probably 90% of our marketing efforts, which really helps our audience share.
Who is the cost on those carrots? Because I, when I first saw them, I go, wow.
Yeah, it was a local artist that we use a lot.
$3,000.
Yeah, $3,000.
And we own them, so we can use them in future years or in future locations.
Right. So we own them, and they'll be popping up somewhere, I'm sure. There's already some ideas for next year.
They grow on you.
We thought it'd get super hot, maybe cause damage to the trees, but we kept checking with our arborist, and there was no damage. And it was a really warm summer, so it worked out great.
Didn't we lose one? Did somebody take one of those?
Somebody tried to. They were not successful, thankfully.
So this slide is just some common photos that you're going to see at the market every week. A lot of great volunteers and a lot of great people coming back week after week. And you'll recognize most of our volunteers in that center photo from people who've been with us quite a few years, including Joanne as well. So sales, this is the one that I'll kind of chat about a little bit. You can see I'm kind of a solid, it was pretty flat there for a while, and then all of a sudden, this year, you're going to see that we are up by about 66%. And we talked earlier about changing our drive-bys from about 600 people to about 30,000 during that same number of hours on Auburn Way. And Amanda might be able to speak to how many just dropped in, but definitely, the visual out there made a big difference, as well as ancillary things to do, so that when a family comes, instead of just 30 minutes at the market, it became an hour and a half in the park. And so I think that would really help. But you can see, the vendors obviously would be super happy when they go from 188 to $312,000. We're selling booth space, not a percent. And so that means there's money in the farmer's pockets and, or the vendor's pockets, I should say. And so this got us above the county average for markets by about 9%. So super happy about that turnaround. And we had some really nice days, there's a couple of bad weather days, but we had probably about 18 weeks, probably 15 were solid. And that makes a difference as well, but to go up 140,000, anybody who's trending stocks would be happy with that. I want to speak to customer counts.
So our customer counts increased by 28% this year. What's interesting is that our customer counts increased by 28%, and the vendor sales increased by 66%. So we have a little bit more people coming, which is great. Over 23,000 people coming to the market in an 18-week season, but they're spending so much more. And that's benefiting our community, it's benefiting our shoppers and our farmers and our local artists. So that was really great to see this year. And we do think a large part of it is due to the location. We often, every week, had people come in and say, you know, oh, I just saw it, I popped on by, and look at all this stuff that's here. So we were very pleased with that.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
What's the timeframe that they were dropping in? Were they dropping in after church? Or were they just throughout the whole day dropping in?
It's throughout the whole day. We do find that we're busiest between about noon and. We do find that we're busiest between about noon and one. I think it's lunchtime, or our families go outside to the park. Noon and one is our peak time, but we're open from ten to three.
Do you have a lot of churches around there?
Yeah.
And so that's nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
That two-thirty to three slows down again, but prime time's middle.
Okay, so EBT and Fresh Bucks, just to give a little bit of a background, EBT is the electronic benefits transfer. It used to be called food stamps, but now it's on a card instead of actual stamps. EBT is used at the market to purchase fruits, vegetables, cheeses, meats, coffee beans, honey, no crafts or hot or ready-to-eat foods. And Fresh Bucks is another program that we're a part of, a food assistance program through the City of Seattle Office Sustainability and Environment. And Fresh Bucks can only be spent on produce. So that money is going directly to the farmers. We saw a huge increase in Fresh Bucks this year. We had four hundred and thirty-seven total transactions. So each time someone came to our information booth to use EBT or Fresh Bucks, we swiped their card, that's a transaction. So we did four hundred and thirty-seven of those, and two hundred and forty-nine of those folks were unique individuals, so they came more than once, which was great. We found that seventy-four percent of those folks using EBT and Fresh Bucks were living in Auburn. These, this is our community. We are serving directly to Auburn. We're trying to make Auburn healthy by 2020. So we thought that was great. We did find that some people come just once, and about thirty-four percent of shoppers attended the market more than once, which is good to see. We hope that number will grow. We saw a huge increase in our Fresh Bucks funds this year. It reached over twelve thousand. In 2017, we only redeemed about three thousand dollars. We attribute this increase to the fact that the limit on the amount of Fresh Bucks that customers could get was lifted. So in the past, we were only able to give customers ten dollars each week, and now we can give them whatever they want, which is great. We had some people take out a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, and that's all going back into the farmers' pockets. So we had an increase of two percent of farmers at the market, which isn't a huge increase, which is okay. We found that we have plenty of farmers to serve our community. But the farmers found that their sales, just the farmer's sales alone, increased thirty percent. So we have the same amount of farmers who are now making more money than they were in previous years. So they were very thrilled with 2018. We also had a huge increase in prepared food at the market. In previous years, it was harder to maintain and keep those prepared food vendors on site, mostly due to customer counts. You know, when you're a food truck, you go buy the number of tickets, and we just weren't producing enough tickets for them. But we had plenty of food this year, lemonade, hot dogs, barbecue, smell so good every week. And I think the community really enjoyed it. And then it was great, you could take your lunch and walk through the park and walk your dog, and it was great.
Yeah, a lot of the things we heard was that, you know, love the grass, which was a great reuse of the Big Daddy's site, that people like actually being on the lawn out there. And we tried to keep it as healthy as possible in light of the fact that we had eighteen markets and a bunch of car shows on it, et cetera, et cetera. So we held up as well as we could. You know, when farmers say my food is, my sales have doubled, a lot of people said they saw it just driving by, loved the new location, easy to get to, lots of foot cus, foot traffic. So those were kind of the vendor comments that we looked for at the beginning of the year. We've also surveyed a lot of our users as well that we have over the weeks. The volunteers up there are counting about every hour, how many are here and asking them questions. And so obviously, it was a great, it was a great year, happy to answer any questions. But Amanda did a great job out there and we were thrilled to have her. It's always fun to be out there if you have a chance to show up on a Sunday and have, in the past, you know, I'd go out of my way to do it.
Councilmember Palozza.
I am exceedingly happy at the three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar gross sales. I mean, for the farmers, that money, it tells them, hey, we've got viable market, come on down. Now, part of your strategy, you look at booth rentals fees every year, don't you? This might be the prime time to increase booth fees because they're making much more money. Just a comment.
What is the booth fee?
It's a thirty-five dollars for a ten-by-ten stall space, so it's not super expensive.
And I think we really should look around us again, you know.
Think there was a discount if they bought into so many?
Uh, we're next year, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so if you're a frequent vendor, you get a little bit of a discount. Yeah.
It's a, it's a one, it's a wonderful attribute for our community, it really is. And there shouldn't be any reason why we cannot continue long after I'm retired.
It's not going away. I think if we get to three-twelve again or go up again, that's just a great, great trend because we want people eating healthy food.
Councilmember Trout Manuel has a question after you.
Amanda and her team did a great, great job. We got some wonderful volunteers out there. Because like I have always touted, the market isn't gonna go unless you take care of your volunteers. Because they're the, they're the heartbeat of the market. And so my question is, here's my question, Daryl. Are we gonna be back there next year, same spot?
Oh, yeah, we'll be back there probably for minimum three seasons based on the downtown development. At that point, we'll evaluate whether we'll do one, two, or a mini one or whatever, but we're definitely back at let's go.
I mean, it's got so much activity.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the library, the Rotary Spray Park, the park itself.
That would not be a letter you want to send to the vendors right now, that we're moving.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Bill, didn't you know that she had, this is a statement, that she has you on the top of the list for volunteers? You're gonna retire, so you're gonna need something to do. Okay? Yeah, okay.
Are they gonna continue the Dog Days of Summer event?
Yes, did you enjoy that? It's quite fun.
I had a lot of fun being a judge there for that, but too, too many choices out there.
It was a great turnout this year.
It was, yeah. I had a question relative to the timeframe. I noticed that Kent keeps theirs open through October. Have you ever had any plans or thoughts to moving it out?
No, our sales and our start noticeably going down at that point, especially with the farmers, and they get a little market burnout as well. So it's, if you, if we had the weeklies here, you would notice that beginning in September, right after Labor Day, the revenue return goes down and the weather starts going down by October. So we match up pretty well with most of the rest of the Puget Sound markets. I think the ones that go a little longer might be a little craftier than ours and not as farmer-centric as ours.
Play on words, right?
We're as crafty as they get, but I think we're pretty happy with our timeframe. Yeah.
Good questions.
Just one real quick. Are we two days the weekend, or just one?
No, just Sunday. Yeah, most of these farmers are at a different market on Saturdays.
Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wales.
Well, I think that what's gonna happen this spring, when it's time to sign up, farmers make their plans for the entire summer. I bet you're gonna see a huge increase in the number of people that want to come and that's where you're gonna see the increase in farmers.
Yeah, I think you're gonna see more people for the full, going just for the full season because they've felt success now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you should walk by and we should, I mean, this is a success story. Yes, Amanda!
She should be the walker buyer. I just show up and buy product.
It's a team effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Let's throw one more chair up here.
Now we'll be dealing with resolution number fifty-three ninety-one for the Auburn Symphony Orchestra.
It's sliding down.
Some familiar faces.
Yeah. Well, before you tonight at the study session is resolution fifty-three ninety-one, and this is the annual resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Auburn Symphony for the annual support that's been going on, I don't know, for fifteen-plus years, I'm assuming. That's the only ones I can speak to. But I'm really excited to be joined by Nancy Colson and Rachel Woolsey. She's the new executive director at the Symphony. And to talk a little bit about their annual report, which is required as part of their scope. And you guys have a copy of that in front of you now, as well as some of the market literature, marketing literature as well. So hopefully, you get a chance last year, it's coming here, to go to one of their shows. They're always outstanding, and I'll turn it over to Nancy.
Absolutely. Thank you, Daryl. And I just, I realized when you're a musical organization, one of the things you really like is encores. So I ran across something that I said at this very meeting in 2015, and I'm going to do an encore. Because I thought, how could I improve on this? So, over twenty-two years ago, an acclaimed major city ballet orchestra reinvented itself in a nearby suburb to play, in addition to the regular ballet season, music from the classical repertoire onstage rather than in the pit at the ballet. The major city was Seattle. The ballet company was Pacific Northwest Ballet. And the orchestra in the suburbs is our own Auburn Symphony Orchestra. It's an unusual story, probably unduplicated in the country. At the time, the City of Auburn's cultural arts program was looking for an orchestra to be part of the Bravo Performing Arts Series, and the Auburn School District's Performing Arts Center was of a quality to support orchestral performances. The maestro came out and walked around the PAC and snapped his fingers to check the acoustics and said, this could, this could work. So a big-city professional orchestra is expensive. And so the third leg of this venture was to collect a group of community members willing to take on the immense task of supporting this new venture organizationally and financially. So as you can see from the beginning and continuing today, this extraordinary gem in Auburn has been nourished by a collaborative effort. And we want to let you know how much we appreciate the city's original and continuing support. So the City of Auburn has been with us from the very beginning. The form's changed a little bit, but it's been there since day one. And there's a quote that I, people have heard before, but this is one of my favorite quotes from Millard Pryor, who says, "Giving to social purpose organizations supports a community's needs. Giving to arts and heritage organizations supports its assets, and great communities do both." Auburn is a great community that supports social purposes and its assets, one of the great ones being the Auburn Symphony. The Auburn Symphony is an asset that adds to our stature, our sophistication, our maturity, and it's also an asset that draws visitors to our community. People come here to hear a concert, eat out, come early and shop, maybe stay overnight. They put dollars into our economy. Sixty or seventy musicians are in our community for several days rehearsing, eating out, and being in the community. So as you remember, after the unexpected resignation of our founding conductor and music director in October of 2015, we had two challenges. One was to find guest conductors for the remaining programs of that season, which, by the way, had, and Lee Valenta, who was general manager at the time, was making phone calls across the country to find conductors to substitute. They're not just walking down the street, trust me. But a byproduct of that was, he would call someone who would say, like, he talked to one person in Kansas City, and he was not available, but he says, why don't you talk to this fellow in Baltimore? Maybe he can do it, and he did. So one of our guest conductors was from Baltimore, another one was from California. And during that process, the awareness and stature of our symphony became known and grew in people's minds because we're seen as a quality symphony that is worth going across the country and be a guest conductor for. And that's, that's huge. So when we had that happen to us, finding guest conductors for the remaining programs of the season, and then we had to program and book conductors for the following season, and in the meantime, embark on the process of finding a replacement. After a comprehensive process by a diligent and dedicated search committee, we were delighted to make the decision last spring to appoint Wesley Schultz as our new music director and conductor. He started midsummer. Wes is also the associate conductor of the North Carolina Symphony in Raleigh and divides his time between the two orchestras. And as an aside, that's very common in the music world with young, up-and-coming conductors. They, a lot of them make trips across the country to conduct in numerous places. But we're delighted to have him with our orchestra. And also, our longtime general manager, Lee Valenta, had announced his plan to retire in August. We told him he couldn't do that, but he did it anyway. So another search committee embarked on a separate search for a new executive director, and we are delighted to have found, and I'm happy to introduce Rachel Woolsey, who was hired in August. Our mission and vision statements have remained the same, and I like our vision statement the best. Our vision is a community connected and nourished through the experience of life orchestral music. And we, on August fourth, we had board and staff participated in a strategic planning retreat facilitated by Dr. Ruth Camp. And I just, at this moment, I wanted to introduce and thank a couple of our board members who are here, Cindy Lee and Dr. Suzanne Johnson from the Symphony Board. Thanks for coming out. We had, we were fortunate to have, and this is August fourth, we hired Rachel on August first and said, come to the strategic planning session on the fourth. So she jumped in with both feet, and it was a wonderful retreat. We, we made some, some good progress. It was a day-long retreat, and both Rachel and Wes came out from North Carolina to participate as well. And we ended the day with three principal areas of focus: development and operations, audience development, and education and outreach. Development goals are to diversify income streams, improve annual campaign and other fundraising strategies, and build corporate sponsorship programs. Audience development strategies include discount ticket packages, excuse me, to employers and community groups, outreach to interest groups, flex subscription packages, and programming for audience attraction. Audience development also includes a more intentional marketing plan and improved media and web presence, which Rachel is already making those things happen. She's doing a great job. Rachel's going to talk more about the education and outreach elements of our retreat, and here's Rachel.
So you have details in your packet of all of the education programs that were done in the last season, but I'm gonna highlight just a few for you. The most notable, I think, or one that I was really touched to hear about, was last April, before I started attached to the Planets program, which was a sell-out concert last April. The day before, there was a special dress rehearsal for elementary school students, mostly fifth graders, and they were able to come and experience the Planets program, which also had visuals done by an artist, Adrian Wired, of, of the Planets for each, which detail each movement. And that really was just astounding to me, that this organization was, was that involved in, in the community that it serves. We also continue to do ten-dollar tickets for music students in the Auburn School District and their, and then their accompanying family members also get ten-dollar tickets, which is a significant discount from the thirty-seven and thirty-dollar adult ticket prices. And that, I think, is really a perfect match between what the kids are learning in their classrooms and then going to see professionals do exactly what they are doing on the stage for a really reasonable price. We also continue to have pre-concert talks with one of our cellists, Dave Beck, who is also a classical host on King FM up in Seattle. And he does a wonderful job of connecting the current program to, with the historical context of it, but also, you know, a relevant, how is it connected to our lives? And so looking, so these are all programs that we've done or, you know, will continue to do. to do. But most notably, just this season, we reformed our education committee to explore some more sustainable education programming. And actually, Cindy and Suzanne are both on that committee. And we plan to work with teachers in the district in order to find out what they would like from us in terms of education programs, and then we have something in the works with the library as well for programming there. And then also, with the long-term goal of hiring an education coordinator in order to really boost all of those activities. Because I'm the only full-time staff member, so it'd be really great to have an education coordinator, you know, really working on one of the most vital programs that gets us out into the Auburn community.
Would you share the, talking about the kids who came to see the Planets program, they, the conductor and Adrian Wired, the computer graphics person, created, it wasn't just a regular rehearsal, they created a special program for these kids with this music. And we had kids, we started with the kids from Dick Scobie because of their relationship with NASA. We thought that would be a really appropriate connection for them. And in conversation with Alan Spachati, the superintendent of schools, he said, "Well, you know, it's so close, we could walk some kids over from Washington." So we had kids from Washington Elementary as well. But we got thank-yous from the kids, and Rachel found this one from this one little boy.
Yeah, they, the different classrooms that attended drew pictures of Planets, and then all signed these giant cards we have hanging in our office. And one quote that I saw that really stood out was, "I enjoyed the performance so much that I was clapping so hard that my hands almost fell off."
So, Member Trout, Manuel has a question.
I have to say, I'm really pleased to hear that you did something for the students, because last year, I was on the committee with George at the community college. There was about twenty of us that got together, and he had a form and questions that he had all of us, you know, "What would you like to see?"
What, Mr. Rips?
Yeah, and that was one of them that I would like to have seen, and I'm glad to hear that you did something. Also, I was just wondering, you said you give discounts to the youth and the families. Have you guys thought about giving companies discounts, like having the company buy for their whole members and giving them a discount? Have you thought of that?
We've actually done that.
Have you?
Yeah, groups of, and we're in the process of kind of working on that, whether we want to keep what we've done before, but it used to be if you bought twenty tickets or more, you would get a significant discount if you wanted to bring a group of your employees or.
Okay.
So.
Councilmember Wales.
I'm always one to kind of push the envelope. You have, I, I'm just incredibly pleased with the student access. So now I'm going to give you another challenge. I would like to see some way or another that we give a scholarship each year from the symphony for, you know, it doesn't have to be much, and I know that by looking at your list of people who donate, or even PEO, we could come up with the money to give, start giving scholarships to young people in the area of classical music or displaying music. So I think that that's something we need to gear up in the next two years for.
Sure. And we're also having, we're in conversation with the Auburn Schools Foundation, and what's the other group? Music for All?
Music for Life.
Music for Life, about coordinating efforts to procure instruments for kids who want to play but perhaps can't afford to purchase an instrument. So we're having, that's ongoing conversations. Dr. Spachati's wife actually plays in our orchestra. She's an oboist, a very good one, actually, so.
One of the other things you might consider, I know my Kiwanis group, or our Kiwanis group, Yalond Symphony, we raise money for golf clubs for kids.
Well, yeah.
And, you know, you should talk to some of us and give us a mission of, we have to do trumpets, or we have to do violins or something, and let us begin to build the stock, because our mission is for kids. And I mean, I'm sure that Rotary's loaded. But you might want to bring us into the fold, because I'm sure we would want to contribute to.
Absolutely. You bet.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hall.
Well, Rotary will raise to the challenge, because as a Rotarian, Bill Pelosi and I'd like to tell you that Rotary's already doing that with musical instruments for kids.
Oh, great. Which one, instruments are you doing, just generally?
Through the music.
Through the.
Great.
Music for Life.
Music for Life program. But we'd certainly love the Kiwanis to join us.
Well, we'd love to, and we're doing golf clubs.
You're on with a good golf club.
And we're also going to support the high school symphony as well.
We are, aren't we?
Yeah, they're, they're doing a fundraiser, and I was hoping that some of my council members received an email from some of the kids, because they sent me an email, and I already supported. So if you haven't, if you haven't gotten an email, I'm going to forward it.
I see, I see the Lions Club getting involved in the hearing part of it, so I'll talk it up at the.
You've thrown the gauntlet.
Okay. We love this.
The challenge is me.
Well, this contract is before you next week at council, and it's the same seventy-five thousand as previous year, and it's budgeted for in next year's budget, the 2019 budget that Shelley will be going over a little later. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Now, the next one on the agenda is item 3C, resolution number 5392, having to do with the airport.
Good evening. For the record, Ingrid, Public Works Director, and I've got Josh Martin here, who is handling the lease agreements for the airport. So I wanted to orient you first, kind of with the airport, and you actually have two items on there, on the agenda, for two amendments to some leases that are out there. The first one we're going to talk about is with Classic, who is currently leasing land for the hangar that they have, and its location, as well as quite a bit of the office space out of the main building of the airport. As you know, as we're bringing the airport management in-house at the end of the year with AMG closing its doors, we need to bring back some space for the airport manager to actually be located out at the airport. So that's part of the impetus of why we need to amend this contract right now. So, maybe Josh wants to go through some more points.
Yeah, so just a quick refresher for council. Classic Helicopter, they're, they're a roto-wing flight training company located, as Ingrid had already pointed out, there on the airport. They've been at the airport since June, June of 2016, and that lease was done with a three-year term, or just shy of three years, but to run through December of 2019. Part of that lease also called for them to do, through a separate agreement, a future development on the airport for some more permanent space. However, try as they may, at this point, they have not been able to garner the business that would make it feasible for them to develop in one of the development locations on our airport. So, when we approached them about amending the lease to basically take back some of the space in that, that office building for the airport manager, they were more than happy to work with us. Their request for doing so was for us to remove that future development agreement portion of their lease. The way the current lease is written, because they didn't hit some of the timelines that were, that were part of that future development agreement, it actually made them so that they were not compliant with their, with their current lease. However, when you look at the lease as a whole, that was the only portion that they were not compliant with. They've consistently been on time with their rent and met all of their obligations in that lease. So, and looking at it saying, you know, removal of the development agreement to, in return to get back some of the space, they stay there and continue to operate. I think from a staff's perspective, makes sense to work with them on that. So, so that's what we've done. We've, we've basically drawn up, as you can see in your packet, taken, redrawn the lease to reallocate some space back to the city, which also then changes some of the numbers and how they pay into the common area of space that, that would coincide with the reallocation of the exclusive space. So, that's, that's pretty well it. There's a couple other small housekeeping items. We replaced Kevin's contact information on the original lease with Ingrid's, mine remains in there, and then the owner of Classic. And then finally, we worked with the attorneys to put in a provision that will be, a new provision put into the lease that essentially states that at the end of their term next year, if, for whatever reason, the city decides not to negotiate with them to extend their current lease, albeit they, we've, both parties have fulfilled the current obligations, they're basically saying, well, we, we're not going to go to the FAA and file any sort of complaint stating that, that the city is unwilling to work with us to renegotiate or extend beyond what our current term is. And the thought process behind that is, the FAA is really proprietary about airports and aeronautical uses being on the airport, and the FAA sometimes can be kind of a crapshoot in working with them, and I think Ingrid can probably speak to that more than I. But, you know, how would they look at, one, airport management, you know, as far as being aeronautical use versus non-aeronautical use? But also with that, throughout the last some time, we've had some very, we've had different conversations with other potential businesses that would not be aeronautical uses, that had some, some warm interest of maybe developing on the airport but needed some existing space, so on and so forth.
So I'd want to clarify with that, that they, they are airport support services.
Yes.
So such as a pilot store or other things, but they are not aeronautical use specifically. And so that's what we want to, just keep the flexibility open for how do we use that space where Classic is. If Classic is either not fulfilling the terms of its lease at the end of 2019, has no, doesn't want to continue doing business, or whether they do want to continue doing business, but we have others that might be interested in that office space that might have a better presence for the airport and the uses that we want to see out there.
Councilmember Wales.
So, are you subtly saying that they may not be around in 2019?
So their current lease expires at the end of 2019. So, as Josh alluded to at the beginning, their original business plan was dependent upon some federal funding through Green River College for them to do some training for helicopters. That program, through the federal government, is not available at the point in time. So they, they are currently working for, what are they going to do to build that business up, to keep it successful going forward?
I was a little surprised to see that language in a couple of places in here about the agreeing to not have any complaints. That's, that's a very strange statement to put into a contract. I know you've tried to explain the purpose of it, but I'm just not totally convinced that that's the right thing to put into a contract with another company.
So a Part 16 complaint with FAA is basically, if we choose at the end of 2019, let's say we have another tenant who wants to use the building space here for doing something else that is support services to the airport but is not aeronautical use. Let's say they wanted to actually put a mechanic in there or do something else that serves the airport, that may provide better service for all of our tenants there than a flight training school. And we may make that decision, as a city, that that might be in the best interests of the city for the airport. FAA's perspective on that is, it's not flight, the other is, you should give flight the preference.
So this, this, this statement in here basically is, is constraining the less E. Do we have a fear that this is going to happen and it's going to have?
Not necessarily, but it's, it's always a potential with FAA.
Well, I would think that would be true in almost any case of a business decision. Why do we feel so, pardon the expression, hard over about this one particular company?
It's, it's not necessarily one particular company. It's, we have the opportunity here with the way Classic's lease is currently written to make this accommodation in there based upon the changes that they're asking for from us to remove the development agreement. So the reason you have the development agreement is because the intent is for them to build a permanent hangar facility, which they are not currently planning to do. So with not going forward with doing that permanent hangar facility, we want to make sure that what we want to do on the airport for future development can be accommodated and not be held up because we have Classic on the premises.
Well, as a person who used to write contracts for a living, I really don't like that kind of language in a contract. I don't see the benefit. It's like almost a freedom of speech kind of a thing. You can't speak out if you have a problem. I, you know, but that's my personal feeling. Nancy.
So, there are such things as non-story agreements, which if you use your thought process of freedom of speech, would be similar. This is just something that our legal department has said is okay. Classic has agreed with that language, is, they're willing to have that language in there. This is not us coming to you without having those discussions with them first, and so it's the opportunity for us to have a guarantee that they're not going to hold up any type of development or progress out of the airport, just because they're not meeting their obligations. And so it's, it's just kind of a failsafe for the city, and since they're willing to have it in there, and our legal department has said that it would be good for it to be in there, we would.
Yeah, I fully understand that both parties had agreed to that. I just thought it very strange to see in a contract like this, but that's my opinion. Councilmember Wales.
I'm glad to see it in there, because the stories, the horror stories that have been shared with me about the FAA, you know, anything that keeps us from having an internal dispute, so that then they're in our face, I think, helps us. I had two more questions. One has been answered. They're the group that has the tent hangar. The next question, I'm not really, though my husband flies helicopters, they don't use jet fuel, do they? Because they're called helicopters?
No.
These particular helicopters do not.
So it won't impact where we're trying to go with jet fuel? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I agree with you, Bob. That, those phrases provide a negative context right from the get-go, and I don't know what we're really trying to prove.
So, so what you're giving up right now is the development agreement. So you're giving up what the council previously agreed to was to allow Classic to locate here with their temporary tent-type hangar, with the intent that within three years, they would develop a permanent hangar and a permanent building facility. They are no longer planning to do that permanent hangar and permanent building facility, so again, you have a temporary facility on there that has a very finite life to it for that tent hangar that's out there. So, do you want to constrain the city and the airport for potential future development out there, because we've allowed this temporary use at the airport that, again, may go away at the end of 2019 or 2020, if they can't make that business continue to be successful?
Sorry, no, please.
Steve, so please tell me your legal reasons for putting that type of language in the contract.
Now, getting into attorney-client privilege conversations, when we can adjourn to our executive session if council wants, it's something that protects the city from having to deal with possibly unnecessary claim against, by the current tenant to the FAA. It's something that was bargained for at arms-length between the city and landlord and the tenant in return for the city giving up a very valuable asset in the proposed construction of a permanent hangar in the development agreement. So, for the city to give up that right, to have these, this tenant build a permanent structure that would eventually. structure that would eventually come back to the city to be able to use the, the airport, to use that structure as efficiently for overall airport maintenance and, and operations as possible is perfectly within the rights of staff to, to make that bargain in the development of the council.
Councilmember Holman.
The problem, as I see it, is not with Classic helicopter. This advantages Classic and the city of Auburn and protects us from the FAA and the bureaucratic organization that that is. So, I'm in favor of it. It's, it's cheap insurance and it benefits all parties.
I personally think it's like a gag order, but, you know, one thing is the business thing. I can see the business perspective, but at the same time, I, and I understand that, but you don't want them going to the FAA and whining, which might put a cloud over our business operations and operational. So, just my thoughts.
One other thing to consider is that, if I'm reading this correctly, we're not asking them for any more rent. Presumably, the development agreement and their promise to construct a permanent facility on the airport property was a factor in the council's establishing the amount of rent. So if we just relieve them of this responsibility and we don't get any, we, we can't just relieve them of the responsibility with the development agreement without getting some consideration in return. So if we don't get a promise of some kind that has value to us, the only, one of the only other alternatives is to get something else of value, which could come in the form of higher rent.
Councilmember Trump.
Bob, is the wording, agreeing to not make any complaints, is that the wording that you oppose in this whole sentence?
Complaints, yeah. It's, they're, they're basically saying in the contract language that they can't make any complaints to the FAA after the contract is over.
Is there any other wording we could put in there instead of, you know?
So, so I would add that it's, it's specific complaints to how we are allowing the use of that space that they were occupying. It's not any complaints to the FAA. It's specifically about if their lease ends and we lease to somebody else that is different service than what they are, it restricts their ability to complain to FAA about us not negotiating with them.
But Ingrid, that's a business decision, okay? That's a business decision and, and an operational decision. That has nothing to do with a contractor or supplier going to the FAA with a complaint, in my book, in my way of thinking. I, I just, you know.
So, and I think at the heart of this, the other thing to, to remind the council is that the city of Auburn is the sponsor for the airport. We don't, we're not the official owner of the airport. We basically run it on behalf of FAA. So if they make this complaint to FAA, FAA comes back and says, no, you got to give it to Classic, period. And that may hinder what we want to do out at the airport with that space and with future development out at the airport. So, as Steve said, this is the same.
So they're the 600-pound gorilla in the room.
They, they are. And, and this is really about, the development agreement gave the city and the airport a specific product at the end that is no longer there. So, we want to keep the flexibility open for what we are doing with the airport space so that we can make the best use we can of the limited space that we have.
See. Councilmember Pelosi.
Page subject, page 27. This is Exhibit B 1.2. And I want to ask the attorney, are these going to be put into the final contract that we look at for approval? Is this going to be updated? Because if it isn't going to be updated, then I think we should have initials for both party agreeing to these type of changes.
So Exhibit B is part of the agreement. So it's part of the amendment. So the, the original map is part of the original agreement with Classic that lays out a specific area and the common area. The map that you see on page 27 is modified from what the original map was and will be part of the amendment document that Classic signs.
Right. But two years from now, we have a problem. And Classic says, I don't agree with those changes. You don't see my initial on those changes. In all contract amendments, you always see an initial by someone that, that is agreeing to these changes. So in order to protect the city of Auburn, we should, we should have initials in their package.
Can I just ask that as far as the legality of this contract, that we leave that to our legal team to handle? And if they feel that there need to be initials or changes to that document that they work on that when it comes back to you for final approval, but that we not as a body here get into the legal aspects of the contract?
I'm merely making my point there.
Right. And so that's, I'm just asking if we can have legal make those determinations as opposed to us as a body.
Yeah. That's good.
Thank you both.
We're not quite done. We've got one more to go through. So, the next one we have is an amendment for Spanaflight, who is located out at the airport, at the little building located near the main entrance into the airport field itself. And this is a much simpler amendment that we can go through.
Yes, much simpler. So Spanaflight, again, has been out at the airport for about as long as, as Classic, just, but included with the, the, the office space there, there's also two airplane tie-downs that's included as part of their lease. So simply stated, their lease is set to expire on December 31st of this year. They have approached the city looking to extend, they want to extend another two years through the 2020 calendar year. So with this one, we're looking at, for that extension, increasing their rent from currently the $870 a month base rent to $925 for the 2019 calendar year, which is roughly a 6% increase. And then, in, in addition to that, we'll, we've got in here an automatic renewal for the 2020 calendar year unless either party, them or us, provides notice that, that they do not wish to, to enact that. If that doesn't happen and we, we do go into that 2020 year, then we've got an automatic, an automatic rental increase again up to $950 a month base rent. And then, of course, on top of that base rent is your security fee and then your lease hold excise tax, go along with that. And then, of course, the, the replacing of, of Ingrid's name on, on the contract for, for notices to be sent. Much more straightforward.
Councilmember Holman.
Spanaflight originated in Spanaway, Washington, is a longtime flight school that's been around for 40, 50 years. It has changed ownership, but the fact that they came to Auburn two years ago and are willing, wanting to stay speaks volumes. And I, for one, think they've been a great tenant, and the more takeoffs and landings, and flight schools do a lot of those, the better our airport looks to the FAA.
Councilmember Wales.
My husband flies out of there, and I've been down into their office area, you know, waiting for pickups and things. And it's, it's a really professionally-run, service-oriented, great service. Yeah.
Councilmember Trump.
Josh, in, in our document, it doesn't have the $870. How much did you say they're granting us right now?
They're currently paying $870 a month for, for the office and the two tie-downs. We just accumulate that into a, a base rent. And then, as is the case with all the leases out there, they pay an additional security fee and then the leasehold excise tax.
So the increase will be up to $925 as of 2019?
Beginning January 1, yes.
Not to beat a dead horse, but going back to the previous resolution, why don't we have those same words in this contract?
So again, so with this one, you don't have the development agreement where you are expecting them to actually develop something further on the airport. This has been and always has been a straight-up individual lease of this space.
But you're not going to have a development agreement in the, in the new contract with the other supplier.
Right. So the amendment for the other one, we are removing the development agreement, so we are giving something up as the city and we are asking for that, that language to be included as part of basically the, the give and take for that negotiation.
Somebody told me one time, it says, when the horse is dead, the jock dismounts. So, I will leave it there.
What was that?
Sounds like a John Wayne-ism.
Kate Pilgrim.
Thank you.
Recology, 3E.
This evening, we have wanted to discuss with you the Recology CleanScapes contract. This will be the city's third, fourth?
Third.
Third year contracting with Recology after Vodis could no longer perform the work. And it's a 5% increase over last year's contract doing the same work. And they, they are on call. Joan has given them favorable marks. It's two people, two trucks, and this will be on the consent agenda next week to renew his contract for 2019.
Councilmember Pelosi.
So why a 5% increase?
Salaries and wages, cost of living, benefits.
Nobody follows some CPI guidelines.
Well, CPI is about what we do, and there was something else, is cost of disposal.
It's mainly the CPI and fuel, they pay for the bags and, and those, and, and when they originally contracted with us, it was the first time, you know, they had a set amount. So this is making sure that they're covering their costs, but this would be everything else.
Councilmember Wales.
Can I continue?
Sorry.
So how do we, how do we know what their costs are? Have they given us an audit or?
Well, that's proprietary, what their costs are. And when we went out to get the costs at the time that they gave us the bid three years ago, Israel comparable with Vodis, the Vodis contract. The other option that M and O recommended was that they would need four people, two trucks, two people on each truck to do the work that Vodis did. And, yeah, and, and we said, well, let's look and see what else we can do. And this is what we came in with. And this is a favorable contract to hiring four people and trucks and all the bags and the supplies.
Councilmember Wales.
I have a couple of questions. This is about $200,000, and I think we were paying Vodis $40,000 a year?
Oh, no.
Was it 80?
No, it was, it was over that. I mean, it was probably $175,000 by the time.
Okay, good. I feel a lot better about my first question. My second question is, so when I see something nasty by the side of the road, I shouldn't be calling Ingrid and giving Ingrid all the credit for having removed all the nastiness? I should be calling you? Who should I be calling?
You can call either. Yeah, maintenance and operations. We work closely. We also still have the community service crew that helps pick up items as well. It's, it's a, it's a team effort. There's a lot of things that are left for us to get.
Okay, great, because let me tell you, you're doing a terrific job, both of you. I call and sometimes even before I hang up, it's, it's being moved and I want to thank you. And my third question is, as you come down 104th, or you go up 104th and it becomes 304th, there's a curb there that everybody leaves their garbage, overflowing garbage cans out there every day. Do we have any kind of rules or regulations in the city that requires people to not leave their garbage cans for extended period of times out the front of their homes?
We do. We, our city co-reQUIRES them to bring their container back in after collection. And so if you let me know what the addresses are, we'll send a letter.
Great. Thank you very much. You're wonderful.
Councilmember Trump.
So I have seen them out there where I live up on Muckleshoot on Dogwood. So is Muckleshoot partnership with us on that? Because they're doing a fabulous job. I stopped and I thanked the guy. He had two big bags dragging them with him. And I didn't know who was paying for that, but he said he had just gotten hired. He had been doing it for about three weeks, and he's, he's out there every week cleaning up. So it's us that's paying for this. Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pelosi.
Hello, Joan, who monitors their work?
I do. And I do, I do random checks. I'll, I'll rent the city car out and drive around and check to make sure the routes are doing okay.
I know it's got to be perfect if you do it, Joan.
I know.
I, I have one more. Everybody, this is page 47. Scope of work, exhibit A. I'm looking at one specific task, A, small letter A, litter cleanup, and the, the small I, blow and sweep building edge of the curb line in core area at U. So when I see, when I see somebody blowing it into the street or curb, what should we do? Because that's not helping the city.
Well, so this isn't a primary task that this group does. They do it when we need it to be done, and not maintenance and operations.
Are you, are you asking when you see residents blowing or sweeping into the street?
No, no, I'm, they're calling it core area.
It's the downtown.
So that's downtown here, right?
Yeah. And this isn't necessarily, are you talking about when this crew is doing it or just other people you see are blowing into the street? Is that what the question?
Well, sometimes when I come, come into City Hall, I see a, a heap of, of
Leaves.
Leaves and debris on the curbside, street side.
Are they, I know that Parks Department has this thing that sucks up the leaves. They pile them up and then suck it up? Or they left?
This particular one, it was, I've noticed it. This is not my first itch. So who is to clean that up if I see that debris and leaves?
You can report to maintenance and operations and they'll determine who is the appropriate party to clean it up.
I had Joan Nelson down here, but I'll change that note.
Just move the app, please.
Councilmember Wales.
Since we now have the two garbage leaders here, where do we take mattresses? Or should we just put it by the side of the road someplace and call you and pretend it's somebody else's?
So where you want to take your mattress?
Where do we recycle mattresses? We used to have a place right down here.
Yeah, so their A+ removal recycle is no longer. There's a company called UpTech in Pacific that recycles mattresses.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other question?
I have one brief one, and maybe it's just more of an education for me, but on page 49, there seem to be three TBDs down there under crossed. Is that unusual to have TBDs in a contract?
It's on the level of effort required in each one of those tasks.
Well, is this an hourly rate kind of a thing, or is it some other, is it like a piecework, a job?
They give us a, a price to do the work, depending, yes, depending on what it is.
So would it be like a change order or something if, if? So would it be like a change order or something if, if one of these things came up?
They would usually invoice us separately.
Thank you.
Wow, it's seven o'clock.
Should we take a break, folks? Maybe ten minutes?
Ten.
You deserved it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. We'll hit your big, big one next.
I, I wish it, I, I worked out in the garden yesterday. It's winter, I think. Probably shouldn't happen, I did.
Probably shouldn't.
But I got nasty nurse behind me.
When you're back is, could we see you in the studio for a moment? I have a question.
I'll leave that. So we have other contract language, legal language to protect.
I just don't think they want the FAA to get any bad or wind or something. Because they're, they're probably very sensitive to that. It wouldn't take much to, to kibosh on things. Well, it's the first time I've seen something like that in a contract like that. That really, that really did surprise me.
Hey, Roberto, what's going on?
Yeah, my boss used to use that all the time.
In aerospace, we know how to
That was a Boing-ism.
We know how to beat a horse to death.
What shiny bright shoes you now.
I know, right?
Yeah, move pants a little bit.
Switch to a better channel?
Yeah, we'll get the game on for you later.
Yeah, what about those hocks, huh?
Yeah. It went pretty well. That was a squeaker. It was. But once he, I missed that kick and then he got that nice pass down to lock it. It looked pretty clear. I was too busy losing my money at Muckleshoot. Were you? The screen was behind me. Tension off. It looked like if they were at halftime and they responded. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's like I made a plot, I wrote it down when I muscle lift, awesome. Oh, or Mister? I did. She's still a little bit fuzzy. They give you feel-good drugs. You don't worry about somebody sticking a needle in your eyeball. Having some pretty good stuff. Oh, you would be all I used to try to wear contact lenses. I see people pop their contacts up and then lick them and
You know, don't worry about it, I'm used to that. I did the same thing the other way. Look at it sideways.
Now, just put a mirror right here.
No, I can see, I can see this better. I can see this screen there better than I can.
Yeah?
Yeah, so don't worry about it. I know you did it.
We could either kind of angle it this way.
No, what you can do is just move that back just a little bit.
Reporter, printer. He was a line of hot pigs of iron man. You know, and he would type at a certain rhythm and it would make
The mic is right there.
Considered quite a skilled trick.
It wouldn't hurt anything.
And so they'd put the
Be closer to the mic.
Pages together and you had to proof them.
You just want to be close to the square.
As they held this two-hundred-and-fifty-pound page up and they read it back, you know, on the other side. And my grandfather could read like that as easy as I could read that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's hard because she had eye surgery today, this morning. They went in and put a stem in for her glaucoma and removed her cataract and put an artificial lens in.
A stem, a pipe.
Yeah, I know, I know what it is.
She was that bad, huh?
Well, she has glaucoma.
My sister has it too.
Five or six years ago, they went and drilled a bunch of micro holes in her eye to relieve the pressure. But they've closed up and so now they have to do something a little more
Is she able to see correctly?
Yeah, catch me doing something wrong in an instant. Now, now she's gonna
That's a sixth sense, that's not a sign.
In two thousand seven, my eye split right down the middle of my retina. And I could see double. It was really weird. It's something that you see on sidebar.
Were they able to
Golf throwback?
I did play golf there. What I, what they did, gave me some eyedrops and put a patch on there. And then I believe on laying a hand. And then three days it healed up. They sent me to Seattle to a specialist. He couldn't believe that it was the same eye. By September twenty twenty. And it healed up in three days. Because they were ready to do surgery. And it hasn't happened since. But it was the weirdest sensation looking in the mirror. And it's like looking in, in the middle of a mirror and you see two of you. But you don't see this here. It's really weird.
Well, that would be frightening.
Well, it drove me, I go, what, hummer? He asked me if I hit my head or if I got smacked in the eye and just woke up that way. So how long did she have to be laid, to get laid down?
Oh, just today. She goes in for her, uh, checkup tomorrow morning and we get signed off. Then we go in once a week for
Between you and her, what are we gonna do?
Well, not much because, you know, we've, we're suffering from that terminal disease called AGE.
Old age? Like Ron says, I, I keep falling asleep and those aliens keep coming in and taking his youthful parts out and leaving the old ones.
I'd say something else, but there's a potential that we're being recorded. You gotta feel pretty proud about that farmer's market bill.
I don't think it really matters what we say, to be honest.
Persistence.
We will reconvene the meeting and, uh, I believe the next item up on the agenda is ordinance number sixty-six ninety-three.
Hello.
Shall we?
Yeah. Sixty-six ninety-three is an ordinance that we've all been working on for nine months between staff and council. This is the operating budget for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty budget year. Between the two years, two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, the spend is about five hundred million dollars or half a billion dollars on just the operating side. We've had five council meetings throughout the summer on the budget. It's before you this evening. We've also had two of the three public hearings. And the next public hearing will be December third, next Monday night. We've been over this quite a bit. There's some of the high-level details. There, there are some new staff positions. There are four new staff positions that we talked about. And we also have a projection of sales taxes increasing about three-point-eight percent a year. These are some of the highlights. Building permits are projected to decline, revenues from those activities. On the expenditure side, we have increases in labor and benefits, primarily, and our public safety contracts. We do have some contra expenses in the general fund for expected staff vacancies, uh, one point five million in two thousand nineteen and two million in two thousand twenty. The other funds are, meet all their reserve requirements. We've met all of our reserve requirements on all the funds. Are there any specific questions on this operating budget? There's also the little two-pager in here, which is kind of the very high-level discussion.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Holm.
I'm amazed, and perhaps I'm reading this wrong, but the two thousand nineteen budget is four-point-one percent less than the two thousand eighteen budget. And the two thousand twenty budget is five-point-seven percent less than the two thousand nineteen budget. Kudos.
Well, before we kudos that, there, there are a couple of reasons why. Capital projects in two thousand twenty, they're a bit less. And we'll see that in the next budget. And next time we're going to look at the capital budget, they're a little bit less. That's citywide. So capital projects, what you're doing and where you're going have a big play into that. And we do have those two contra expenditures that we talked about that would tamp that down a bit.
Councilmember Wales.
I'm very, very supportive of the housing repair technician person. And I think that that's going to get us more service, uh, for people who need assistance. And it's a, um, it helps with keeping people from losing their homes because they're not able to sustain them. IT for finance, um, I can support. And a records clerk, that's going to be very nice to be able to have some of this stuff that we work so hard on. And I can understand the water fund. But what, uh, as it relates to custodian and facilities, our physical facilities, have they increased? I know we will be picking up the airport. But can you give me more of an explanation on the custodian?
Well, on the custodian, what we've found, that it's difficult to do coverage of the entire city. Staff has been living with abbreviated service. And they just don't have enough staffing resource to, to go around and service all the departments.
A number, I, I remember a significant period of time ago, we did do some major cutbacks. And so some of these things are to reestablish levels that we had before the, the downturn. So I can, I can appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yes, contracted services. What is funding the custodian is the con, we had contracted services doing custodial work. And due to difficulty getting consistency on those contracted services and quality of work, we eliminated the contracts and we're funding this position primarily.
Okay, got it.
Good Dana.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I would
Services, Dan.
I would like to express support for that idea. It's been my experience that when you have in-house facilities, work being done by employees of the enterprise, they treat their work as if they're working on something they own. When you bring in contractors, you know, you get more of the, uh, I can't see it from my house sort of approach sometimes.
Yeah, and, and the service was getting spotty and, uh, not really, we weren't well serviced. I was probably one of the more vocal.
Councilmember Trump, Manion.
So Shirley Wright, Shirley, Shirley. How many custodians do we have at this time, full-time?
Dana, do you know how many custodians we have? Five, six?
And those five or six facilitate here, the police department, the annex?
Parks Department.
Parks.
Center, golf course.
Senior Center?
Senior Center, yeah.
So we're looking to hire one more or?
One more. We're expanding our total staff, but we're getting rid of the contract, contract workers.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
So what's, what's
So what's, what's driving that labor and industries increase of 7%?
7%? Well, that is the increase that we are increasing to get ourselves where we need to be. As you know, about three years ago, we started our own workers' compensation fund, and we're building up the balance, and we're contributions to get the balance built up where we have an actuarial study that says you're good. We are increasing and doing rates that are comparable to state LNI at this time. Should start tapering off when we get a better idea of our experience, and the fund is established.
What, what has our experience modification been over the last year or two?
Well, we, we are currently building. We have, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but we are, right now, we are about there, well-funded. As far as the expenses, I can get you that information.
Just good to know that, just to see where we are in comparison to.
Sure, sure.
Any other, Councilmember Pelosi.
Kudos. Kudos. This, this is really great for the citizens. You can see how the dollar is broken up.
For you. Well, that's, so you have something to give your constituents.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's good.
It's easier than red cups with pennies in them.
Any other questions for Shelley on this item?
That'll be before you next Monday night.
You can wait along to the capital project.
Excellent.
Okay, the capital budget. Now, remember back in June, we passed, or council passed an ordinance where we established capital funds, and doing so gave us the ability to adopt capital budgets along the lines of those funds. And when the capital budget's adopted, then the cap, the budget in place lives the life of the project. So we won't be coming forward, I think in May, we'll probably be coming forward with care reports from 2018 leftover, but we won't be seeing these lists of projects with all these dollar amounts being carried forward. The dollars were spent, we're carrying them forward year after year after year. So this, so this is why we have a separate budget. It's for the capital budget, and it's the funds that were identified in the ordinance that was passed back in June. And here we show the 2019 capital budget's about 88 million, and it's about 67 million in 2019. We're 155 million over the two years, '71 and '72. You can see that the capital does have an impact on the budget as a whole. Were there any questions? This also ties into your six-year capital facility plan that you've gotten adopted.
I think we're good?
Yeah.
Good job, Shelley. It's ordinance 6703.
This is our final budget amendment of the 2017-2018 budget. And this is the cleanup. There's not too many things in here. Most of it is recognizing grant funds that have been received by the city. There is discussion of the 15th Street Northeast Preservation Project that we discussed last week, the cost overruns due to the strike, and getting the project done so it didn't sit all winter. So here, we see the budget amendment for that. We have the Brandon Park Synthetic Field. It was priced a couple of years ago, and now it's a little bit more, but I think there's some expansion also for younger players to be able to play the field. We have, we're moving some money, the big things, we're moving money from water operating down to capital to help fund those capital projects we've been talking about. We've had a lot of solid waste activity on the roll-off, so we, we do, we're spending more, but there's revenue that's coming in to offset that. The grant funding for the White River Valley Museum. And let's see, a lot of, and the grants for the senior center for the kitchen and some of the programs from the veteran and senior levy that was passed. And also, you probably noticed that we're missing some HVAC equipment from the Arts and Cultural Center, and that was covered all but $5,000 by insurance. We have a $5,000 deductible on that. Are there any questions on this budget amendment?
Councilmember Pelosi.
So, Darryl, how did they steal an HVAC out of the arts and culture?
They didn't steal it out of the inside. It's located on the outside, along that alleyway. There were a unit kind of back where the old staircase is.
Is this portable?
Well, it's portable now. It wasn't portable at the time. It's probably a four-foot by four-foot heavier unit that had been there for quite a few years, and somebody stole it.
Well, I have, Darryl, the, the demo, demolition for Caretaker House at Game Farm Park. Are we gonna replace that building, or?
Not with the building. This is funded through the Facilities Division, so it'd be managed by Lisa, her department, but it's gonna become park space, not another facilities, another facility's not programmed there.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
On the Brandon Park Field, so we did the scope and the budget two and a half years ago, and we see the increase. Do you know what percentage of increase that represents?
Yeah, it probably represents about a 25% increase. Synthetic Field costs have gone up, the size went up a little bit. This is funded with park impact fees, not general fund, and we got a grant from the state for, I want to say, almost half a million dollars for the project. So synthetic fields have gone up noticeably in the last two to five years from when it was scoped before the grant application.
Is this something we could get perhaps updated estimates on, like if it's a year older more, to give us a more representation of what the cost might be going forward?
Yeah, yeah, we've just recently gotten engineers' estimate, because we're just about ready to admit it.
Any other questions? Thank you again.
You're welcome.
2019 proposed legislative agenda.
Do you have an update for the agenda? I have a little small error on the agenda.
Thank you.
So that's some strike-through language, and what should have been included. For the record, Dana Hindman, Member of Administration. As is our practice every year, we like to draft a legislative priorities agenda at the state and federal level, and seek to get council input on what we are proposing, and use that as we go throughout the year. And one suggestion that was made a few months ago, I remember a council member Trout came by, she was heading to NLC, so thankfully I had a couple of, couple of last year's flyers still on my desk. I was able to, to send those to DC with her. So when we have this finalized and have our graphic designers do the layout, we'll make sure to keep these on hand. So should you be making any visits either to DC or our state legislators at any point, and would like to have those available to you, we'll make sure we have them back in the council area for you, and that way you will always have access to them. By way of reference, two, two agendas that we do pay pretty close attention to is the agenda that comes out of the Association of Washington Cities. That is included in your packet on page 91. And also, the legislative agenda that comes out of Sound Cities Association, which I believe was recently approved by SCA, is that correct?
It was approved by Public Issues Committee for transmittal to SCA executive.
Okay, so this is still in draft form. The AWC legislative priorities are not, they were finalized a few months ago. So we wanna just kind of quickly go through what we are proposing this year, and these come from, sometimes there's carryover agenda items from previous years. As we all know, we tend to work on things over a course of several years sometimes, for various reasons. We do, like I say, coordinate with other kind of major regional partners that, that we follow or are members of. And also comes from staff, as well as our consultants, and we have compiled things into what we believe would be the top-level things that we wanna make sure that we're talking about and have the most chance for success with, if you will. Of course, we, we talk about and deal with many other things throughout the year that aren't really in our official document, let's say. But we can start with the federal priorities. The support for federal funding, that's really kind of a carryover thing. Just a reminder to our federal legislators that we do care very deeply about the federal programs that we are a part of, like our Community Development Block grant, our burn grant funding for our police officers, Department of Justice, FAA funds for our airport, and those kinds of things. And again, there is something specific to the airport. As you heard Ingrid and Josh speak about earlier tonight, there, there are things that we need to deal with, with the final runway length and other conversations that we are having at the federal level with FAA and our congressional delegation. The next two, homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, abuse treatment, excuse me, that is a lot of carryover from the, from the previous year, again, ongoing problems. There was some major bills passed at the federal level. Senator Murray, for example, was a co-signer on an opioid bill that we are very excited about, and we wanna make sure that we're taking advantage of those federal funds that have been allocated. On the next page, page 87, obviously, we're going to chase as many funds as we can at the federal level for our infrastructure, transportation issues. And the last thing on the federal side is that a recent issue has cropped up with a ruling that's come out of the FCC as relating to franchise fees, and how franchise fees are charged out, which could have a major negative impact on the city's budget based on how this language is written. So this is something that we have currently opposed. We sent comments to the FCC regarding this language, and we will be speaking specifically to that issue this year. At the state level, the streamlined sales tax, again, carryover. That's been an ongoing thing. We've been working with other cities that have been negatively impacted by the streamlined sales tax mitigation fund. Essentially, we are asking the state to continue that funding until those cities that are loser cities, if you will, based on SST legislation, are made whole. And Shelley specifically has been working very hard on that with her counterparts around the region. Fully Funding Basic Law Enforcement Academy, you all know how difficult it is to hire police officers just because of the length of time it takes to get through academy. Our police department, as well as departments across the state, have requested more classes be offered. Currently, there's just not enough classes out there to get officers through in a timely fashion, so opening up more classes would allow that timeline to be decreased as we send our officers through academy. You're, yes?
Is that?
Sorry.
Councilmember Wales.
No. Is the council member Wales.
That's what I just said.
Councilmember Wales.
The fully-funded basic law enforcement academy, is that a federal responsibility or state responsibility?
I believe it's state. I would defer to.
State.
It's a state responsibility, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So back to the organization of this. Page sixty, or 86, and the top portion of 87 would be what we would take back to DC with the National League of Cities?
Yes.
And do we wanna prioritize these, or have they been prioritized?
They have not been prioritized. We, that is what I'm seeking input from council on, and where the priorities might sit. Oftentimes, we either put them into certain categories, either make them categorical, or we can prioritize. So happy to take any input on that.
Well, I would like to see them prioritized, but, and that's what I'd like to see, but.
Councilmember Trout, may you.
You know, as Dana said, mentioned at the beginning, that I took this to our congressman when I went to National League of Cities. And this last time I was in LA, I ran into some of the mayors that were with me in that group, and they liked the idea, and they said they're going to start doing something like that because they didn't think it was fair that I was the only one that handed this to every single congressperson I met, even people that weren't from my city, from our state.
I'm happy to be unfair in that regard. Thank you.
But they also, they, she also said, were those priorit, they asked me if they were prioritized, and I told them I would need to talk to you, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I think there, there's a couple of, of schools of thought there. One is we could, we could prioritize them and say, well, these are the ones that are the most important to us. Where I might argue that point is depending on who you're talking to, I would hate for, let's say, for example, we know that Senator Cantwell is very deeply involved in veterans' issues, yet we have veterans' issues farther down on our list saying, well, you know, it's like a four for us, where we would like to be able to speak to the strength of the congressperson, or the state legislator, whoever that might be, to say, you know, we know homelessness is important to you, it's important to us too, and so we, it is, it is a major priority. So we can say we, we feel equally about all of these things, you know, like your kids, you don't love anyone more than the other, I guess.
Councilmember Wales.
But I could see where our top three are going to be, mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, and investment in transportation and infrastructure. But, but beyond that, I think that it would be nice, under the telecommunications and cable one, if we could really guesstimate what impact that might have. Now, I know that's really, really hard, but we could do a range, because that adds some gravity to something that's only four lines long.
Right. We actually do know that impact. It would be close to a million, maybe million five, based on how things might change, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we added that, that adds, that, that's a lot to a medium-sized city.
Sure.
Thank you.
And would it be okay if I sent the FCC letter around to, to council? Would that be?
Councilmember Holm.
Thank you, Chair. The SCA draft legislative agenda as published right now on page 90, at the Public Issues Committee meeting earlier this month, there was one amendment made to it on the floor, and I'm going to offer that amendment, just so that our records are, are accurate. So on page 90, the fourth bullet, 1, 2, 3, 4, "Support Expanding Capacity of Significant Regional Corridors by Managing Them as an Integrated System." Chris Roberts of Shoreline offered an amendment that was accepted by PIC, and that amendment is as follows. He added two words, "Support Expanding Capacity of Significant Urban, Regional, and State Corridors by Manage Them," and the rest is all the same. So the two words, urban and state, were added. So the two words, urban and state, were added.
Now, is
Councilmember Wells.
Is SCA's, is it prioritized?
It's just as it is here. Because for some of the cities, it's different. Something on here might be our number one, it might be Shoreline's number two.
Member DeCoursey.
A couple of things. One is, I think prioritizing issues for our purposes is good. I think that you stated, Dana, going back to DC or whatever, is focusing on what that particular congressperson's objectives are, and really focusing hard on that and pushing our agenda that way, so we can get the, hopefully, the most benefit out of that. The other is that, a couple of things. One is that, serving on both the EWC Board and the Form Housing Advisory Board, trying to align some of the issues together, so we're going in with one common voice, not everybody speaking with different voices as we have the same issues. One of those in particular is in relation to affordable housing. On the Housing Trust Fund, although EWC has once again looked at the $200 million range cap, which was only funded, by the way, last year to $110.2 million, the Form Housing Advisory Board is recommending that if we go in and talk investing in affordable housing, that we use the term funded at the level that the Department of Commerce has in the pipeline. So for example, if they have applications in for projects that are considered somewhat shovel-ready, and those projects totaled $350 million, we want the funding at 350, not 200. So that's kind of the message we want to go in with this coming legislative session, is to fund it at the adequate level that meets the need currently, and not below that level. That'd be
Does that say that here?
No. What I'm recommending is that, well, what we can do is, if you go on the Department of Commerce website, and pull up the legislative priorities of Ahab, and include those with this, we should see similar language to that. And our next meeting is December 5th, and I know we'll probably have everything totally finalized by that time, but I think we can mirror some of the language that's already in the Ahab's legislative priorities for 2019 as well.
Councilmember Trout.
So Claude, would you bring us a draft of what you folks are going to be submitting?
Yeah, it's actually, it's on the Department of Commerce website, so if Dana can pull that up and distribute that to everybody.
No, I mean, but when you get it, when your committee finalizes it, and the draft ...
It's actually finalized now. We're just going to go through kind of just a review of it at the December 5th meeting. Pretty much as it's drafted now, is probably what's going to stay in the language, with very little tweaks to it.
And then kind of moving through the last of the state priorities, you've heard a lot about reimbursement for the SCORE facility. There are some issues afoot relating directly to the Department of Corrections, and how much that they are paying for state prisoners at the SCORE facility. We are seeking funding from several avenues for the Arts and Culture Center. We've had a couple of good meetings in the last month with some of our delegation, now that the election is over. And we feel pretty good about accessing possibly some capital monies for that. The next two have to do with kind of affordable housing, homelessness. They have to do with changing building codes in some cases for tiny houses, and the condominium law reforms. That is something that we will see across many cities' agendas, to hopefully spur more condo development, to get us more stock in the starter home market and into homeownership, as we have seen our rents steadily increasing around here. Mortgages tend to be a little bit more stable. We do want to see continuing strengthening of the Public Records Act, and we know it's very onerous on many municipalities' staff to fulfill public records, especially onerous requests. And the next one also kind of comes from our legal department, is, and I would defer to Steve maybe for more detail on that, if you'd like it, legal noticing, business licensing, and government contracting. And that relates to retention and noticing, and also, we want to continue funding for the Municipal Research Services Center, or MRSC. That funding continues to be in jeopardy each session, and we will always advocate for that to remain available. It's a great resource for a lot of local governments. And our kind of social agenda funds, that, Councilmember DeCoursey, I will go and beef up some of that language with your recommendations around affordable housing as well. And then, lastly, as always, at the state level, our infrastructure investments do need continued attention. And I will refer you on the SR-167, SR-509, that is where I made an error, I neglected to replace the language from the Gateway Coalition that Ingrid had sent me. So you see that language there, on basically encouraging a faster timeline for that project, and full funding of that project specifically.
I think it's important for us to recognize that we've had quite a change in the legislature for 2019, and we've been working very closely with some of the legislators over the past few years, and we're no longer there. So we're really going to have to kind of check the temperature of the water, you might say, to really find out where the priorities are for the new legislators, and how we approach that, because some of these issues might be something that's not on the top of their list, although it's been on the top of our list for a few years, support from other legislators. So I think we just need to kind of gather and discuss all that prior to City Action Day coming up in January, or February, I'm sure, I believe. But it's going to take a little more effort to get some of these items in conversation as we go forward through the 2019 session.
You know, I have to agree with you, Claude, with us losing some of the people that we have been working so hard with, and the new ones that just come in, and some of them haven't worked with us at all. It'd be nice for us to have a chance to get to know them now that they've been elected. Is there any way that we could do a, or would we have to do it ourselves, coffee hours with these individuals, or could the city do a welcoming?
So, we wouldn't want to do full council member sessions with each one of them, because that would not, we can do some sort of
I understand, yeah.
If there will be opportunities for us to get to know them, we will ask them to come to present at council meetings, like some of our representatives and senators have done in the past. So we will have opportunities for you to get to know them. Hopefully, you know, we won't be able to do it before session starts, but we will ask them to
They may also have some of their own agendas, too, and that'll be helpful for us to know what their hot buttons are.
Thank you, Dana.
I'll just stay here, Joy, I don't know
I guess she said to her, yeah.
Now, without further ado
Now, I can take over.
Yeah. There's been confusion at tables
Just a little, I thought it was
The focus area
Mike turned to take over with
Chair for the Health and Human Services, Councilmember Trout.
So we're going to have Dana and Joy introduce yourself and talk about the 2019 CDVG action plan.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me. My name is Joy Scott, I'm Human Services Manager. And I come for you a couple times every year to talk about the Community Development Block Grant. So some of this may be a little bit of a repeat, since I've finally worked my way through my first full year. But I did want to check in about our 2019 action plan, let you know what it looks like currently in its draft form, and go over our plans for the coming year. So as you know, the CDVG program provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitled cities. The formula is a little bit of an unknown, it changes every year, and it's based on a number of factors, including the total population of a city, as well as the percentage of poverty. The projects have to align with HUD's national objectives, they need to be eligible under a number of HUD's guidelines, and also, all of the projects are required to benefit low and moderate income persons. In addition, they also have to align with the strategic goals that are set forward in our five-year consolidated plan. So the City of Auburn's consolidated plan currently runs from 2015 to 2019. And our current strategic goals that were developed in 2014 for that plan that we're currently operating under are to support the development and preservation of affordable housing, support job training activities, support low and moderate income neighborhoods with economic and neighborhood development activities, and support accessibility to affordable health care. There are a number of different categories that CDVG dollars can be used for. Each of them come with a unique set of reporting requirements, and some of them come with some stipulations as to a maximum amount that we can set aside. So you'll see with public services and with admin costs, they do cap the percentage that that can be of your annual allocation. One of the challenges for us as a city is that our program year runs from January through December. Unfortunately, due to the timing of the federal budget, we usually don't find out what our allocation is for the current year until about the end of April. And we don't actually get those funds in our line of credit until somewhere between the end of September and the end of November, depending on the year. So what we do currently is, we base our plan for the next year off of the amount that we received in the current year, and we expect to adjust that in that program year, when we receive the accurate allocation from HUD. And this has been the guidance from our local HUD office, asking us to go off of this kind of estimate. So we have a number of different projects that I wanted to feature, just as examples of what Auburn has focused on, and how Auburn has chosen to allocate CDVG dollars over the past few years. Certainly, our housing repair program, you're familiar with, we've spoken about that a number of times. We also fund employment training. Currently, we provide some of our public service dollars to multi-service center for employment training, and we have that in, as a recommendation for the next year's action plan as well. Healthcare to underinsured and uninsured Auburn residents, and that's health and dental services. And particularly, given that that is one of the stated strategic plan goals for our consolidated plan, that's been a priority of our public service dollar allocations. The ADA upgrades at Lesgo Park, the bathroom there.
Councilmember Pelosi.
My question on the
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
On the bathroom. It was just built, completed, and that, the ADA wasn't, was not planned?
So the rebuild of that restroom was done using CDVG dollars in part. We allocated about $252,000
Right.
To make that happen, of the rebuild itself. But the reason that it was eligible was because that included ADA upgrades that were not part of the original bathrooms.
Not part of the original bathroom. I don't follow any of that.
So my understanding, and this is a little bit before I started, is that the restroom facility that was there was not actually ADA accessible, and so it was torn down and rebuilt with meeting ADA requirements.
There, do you want to jump in?
Bill, are you thinking that this is part of an upcoming plan for additional
Yeah.
Funding? No. This is, so this is projects past and present, this is kind of an explanation, right, of what's already been done?
It's already been
Yeah, so it's not asking for any additional funding.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, these are just examples of how we've chosen to allocate funds in the past. Also, the downtown business facade upgrades, there were a portion of those dollars that were CDVG dollars.
Councilmember Brown, just now, he asked a question.
Yeah, thank you. Under the example of employment training, what are some of the examples of employment training?
So we currently fund a program, well, we provide $10,000 of funding to the multi-service center to operate an employment training and placement program for folks who are currently experiencing homelessness. They provide skill-building onsite training, and they also provide ongoing case management, along with job placement services.
So what category of work potentially, or is it training for actual job search? Is that
No, they work across a number of different programs, so they connect folks with things like BFET, which will help pay, if they're receiving food benefits, for college credits and certifications, to go into usually nursing-related fields. Or they will work with them on partnering with ANU or other local, you know, Orion, other job training programs. And they provide ongoing intensive case management, to try and ensure that they're successful in that role, and that they have what they need to find stable work through that program.
Is multi-service center, is that in federal way? Or do we have them here too? We do have them here, too, right?
Their main location is in federal
Federal way.
Yeah. But this, these funds can only go to serve Auburn residents.
Yes.
So they do significant verification of that, and we monitor them every year to make sure that that's happening. And so, as I mentioned, this is just some statistics about our current year's contract, so this is not full year statistics, this is just through the first three quarters of 2018. We currently fund Health Point through medical and dental services. So far this year, through September, 66 Auburn residents received medical services across 103 visits, and 63 Auburn residents received dental services across 118 visits. And with the multi-service center, they have provided 15 Auburn residents with ongoing job training and placement services since January of 2018, that are still currently all enrolled in their program. I wanted to share one story that we received from Health Point of how they utilized these dollars in practice. They sent this story with their last report, and I felt like it was a good picture of the types of services that folks are able to receive at the Auburn location. They shared that one of their patients is a longtime Auburn resident who is underinsured and suffers from uncontrolled diabetes. They contacted the client to bring her in for a follow-up visit, because her last documented A1C was 12. She declined, and they called her once a month for the next six months. During each contact, she had a reason why they were not able to schedule a follow-up visit. Finally, she told them that she could not afford the office copay. Health Point informed her that her visit would be no cost to her, so she scheduled a visit with her primary care provider. The nurse and behavioral health consultant also talked with her about her diabetes during the visit. She now comes to her appointments regularly, and her A1C has dropped to 9.2, which is a significantly more healthy level for her at this time. They also provide significant dental care, and they shared with us a story about Devon, an Auburn resident and Health Point patient, who received a number of services. But they also connected him with benefits that were available to him because of his income. So when he first came to them, he was unsheltered, he did not have a phone, and he was battling an addiction. He also was in need of dental services at the time. Through the variety of services that they have there, they were able to help him obtain a free phone, connect him to Hope Link for transportation services, enroll in food stamps and receive food benefits. And also, thanks to their walk-in substance use disorder clinic, they were able to get him enrolled into a program to help him address his opioid addiction. He begins a suboxone program and counseling, and he is currently, throughout He begins a suboxone program and counseling and he is currently thriving. And he told Health Point that thanks to all of this work, that he's coming out of the darkest place he's ever been. So they really provide significant wraparound services and not just the presenting medical need that the patient may be walking in with.
And I have to say, Health Point has really been a really partner, to have the partnership with Blue Ribbon Committee. They do a lot of the volunteers at some of the events that Blue Ribbon puts on and so they have really been a big, big help.
And certainly you're familiar with our housing repair program, but we do allocate historically at least half or a majority of our funds in, in order to support the housing repair program. You may have seen some of these photos before, but just to illustrate the types of issues that we see in our minor housing repair program. We always have an influx of calls and this year has been no different, usually in October and the beginning of November when folks try to turn on their furnace for the first time. We hear from a lot of folks who don't have heat in their homes. And so we've already been sending out contractors on a weekly basis to try and connect folks with the items that they need to be healthier in their homes, to be safer in their homes, and certainly to have heat during the winter. And obviously you see that roofs are a significant issue in our, for many of our homes as well.
Yes, Mr. Pelosi.
A couple of years ago, Dana, you may recall this, CBDG funding was being attacked and National League Cities went up on the hill and da-da-da.
Full court press.
Yeah, and so you sent me some of these photos of what we did in our city. And it really, it did have an impact on some of the centers. So if you're going back there, take these, these back, show them what we do.
Send you a packet of photos, certainly.
Seriously, I'm telling you that all the mayors and council members that were with me up there, they were very jealous. They go, "Yeah, Mrs. Trout, you're making us look bad." Well, thank you for being on top of it.
So just to give you a sense of where we are in our administrative requirements, these are all of the things that HUD requires of us. With the exception of the five-year consolidated plan, all of the rest need to be done on at least an annual basis. So currently HUD requires that we submit an annual action plan and approve it prior to the start of our program year before we can begin incurring costs. I'll next be in front of you to discuss CDBG for our CAPR, our Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And that will just be a summary of everything that we accomplished during our 2018 program year before that gets transmitted to HUD.
I just have a question. Do you have any up-to-date photos of places that we have done? Because I recall this looks like the same, same picture that we saw last year. So do we have anything that we have done recently?
Absolutely. I don't have it in this presentation on me right now, but we do collect photos from most of the, we have before and after photos from most of the homes.
It would be nice to get some of those to see where we're spending our money.
Sure.
Thank you.
Additionally, we also conduct sub-recipient monitoring. So whenever we have funds that we're providing to another agency like Health Point or a multi-service center, we have staff who go to that agency who conduct usually a half day. We spend four or five hours going over a number of their documents, ensuring that their client files are complete and accurate, that they've done income verifications appropriately and they've also ensured that the folks being served are residents in Auburn. They actually have a map that they have to use for each of their clients where they, they show exactly where they live to ensure that we do not count folks who are in unincorporated areas as part of the CDBG program, since it is specifically required to be going towards Auburn residents. Additionally, we do ongoing project management for each of the projects that we oversee. You saw some of those examples earlier of things like sidewalk projects or the bathroom project at Les Govee. And each of those projects requires extensive environmental reviews. We have to follow federal procurement procedures and we do a number of, we have to undergo a number of steps in our housing repair program in particular to ensure that we're addressing any lead hazards that might be present in the home. There are contractors that are certified in remediation that we can work with if lead hazards are identified. And we need to ensure that there's no damage being done to any areas that might contain lead and that we're not jeopardizing the safety of the residents in those homes. So you did receive a copy of our draft 2019 action plan in your packets. This is a high-level summary of what you'll see in there of how we are proposing to spend our dollars for 2019. Our expected CDBG allocation, based on this year's allocation, is 604,000. This year's allocation ended up being 603,340, which is in fact the highest allocation that we have ever received. It was based on a formula change that occurred towards the end of last year and all of our neighboring cities and communities also saw significant increases. So the advocacy that had been taking place at a federal level really worked and made a difference in, certainly in our community and in others. Historically, Auburn has set aside the, as close to the maximum 15% cap as possible to go towards those public services. Health Point, like I mentioned, for medical and dental care. Multi-service center for job training is what we're proposing. And also $20,000 to provide overnight shelter and homeless intervention services for Auburn youth and young adults. This ties into a goal that we set forward in our consolidated plan, that we allocate funding for homeless intervention services specifically and that we also use CDBG dollars to help provide shelter for youth and young adults that we have not yet done within our current consolidated plan.
Where is that going to be? Where is that going to be? The overnight shelter for the Auburn youth?
So Friends of Youth has scattered site housing, so they have multiple locations across King County and they provide transitional services as well as a number of other outreach and drop-in services. So they don't have one set location.
And do we have a number of youth that we're going to be facilitating?
Yes, so on page, let me check here. I grabbed a packet so that I can have the accurate page numbers. That, pages 134 to 136 lay out the dollar amount and the number of individuals served for each of our proposed allocations. For Friends of Youth, we propose that 18 homeless youth or young adults will benefit from transitional and shelter services. The reason why that's a little bit of a lower number is because transitional housing tends to be significantly more expensive because it takes place over a much longer time period. And Friends of Youth serves specifically youth and young adults who have high barriers to access and need intensive supportive services in those locations.
Okay. Are there any further questions on that? Largo?
Can we look at page 115, please? I was of the understanding that communities and schools no longer existed.
So this is a list of agencies that we have been in touch with in 2018. And we certainly have been in touch with communities and schools earlier this year. I don't know if there have been changes in the last month or so since this was drafted, but we have representatives from communities and schools at monthly service provider meetings that we facilitate.
Can you tell me who that representative is?
I would have to go and check the sign-in sheets, but I can get back to you.
Okay, great. And so this is, this is for last year, not for this year? This is not for 2019?
No, this is the outreach that we've done in '28.
Okay, great. Okay. Can we look at page 130? This is kind of an end-of-a-year report.
This is a, an, a combination of the plan for the following year and the outreach that we've done in 2018 to get to that point. So it is a little bit of both.
Okay. So my question here is number two. We are going to impact 45 households with $400,000?
So this is the allocation that we have proposed for the housing repair program. And this corresponds with the decision package, at least partially with the decision package that you have discussed as part of the budget, where we are proposing a program shift, a program delivery shift, in how we are currently providing housing repair services. So we currently, our model for our minor housing repair program is that all of the repairs are done by licensed contractors in the community. And because of the federal procurement procedures as well as our internal process, we need to ensure that for each, each applicant that we receive, for each issue in the home, that we get multiple bids before we can move forward. What that ends up turning into unfortunately is that we have a significantly higher wait times than neighboring communities that have in-house technicians to help perform some of that work.
So to follow up with Largo's question about the 45 homes that's going to be affected, do we already have those? Are those homes that we have on a waiting list? Or how do you know it's going, where do we get those 45 homes?
So our current waitlist is running between seven and nine months right now for our housing repair program. For most other cities around us, it's about three weeks. And part of that is because of the current model that we have in place. We're hoping to implement this change in order to be more efficient and go a little bit further with our dollars, be able to serve more homes and not necessarily be subject to shifting contractor rates.
So why is it taking seven to nine months?
Bids, you've got to find a specialist.
So unfortunately, we need multiple bids for every item that's happening in the house. If we receive an application from somebody, for example, it's very common that someone might come to us with an issue with their plumbing and with their furnace, sometimes with their subfloor as well if there's been a plumbing issue. So they might need to get as many as six bids for that one house in order for us to move forward.
Meanwhile, these people are living in a bad situation for that length of time?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's why the handyman thing is going to be just great.
So is this something we could fit into a job or contracting program or utilize a small works roster from another agency to expedite the work?
It's going to get a handyman. It's certainly something that we can look into. We, we do have a significant list of contractors, many of whom are based in Auburn, that we've worked with historically for this program and that other neighboring cities utilize as well. And we have kind of a shared, a shared list of folks that we've received all of the documents that are required by us in order to provide federal funding. We are certainly happy to explore other models to make that piece of it go a little bit faster.
Yeah, I think it's important to look at the other opportunities and, you know, looking at from the standpoint of, of a list of contractors who do this work regularly, but also to eliminate the bidding process because if it's a job or contracting that we could implement, or if it's a small works roster, then the prices are already established. And you can go in with just a shopping list of what needs to be done and get quotes that way versus spending the amount of time we need to spend to go through a public bidding process.
Sure, I'd be happy to look into that. I'm not sure how that interfaces with the CDBG requirements specifically.
I don't know.
But I'm happy to find out.
Should fit, I'm not sure, so, yeah.
So this isn't where we're going to use the handyman?
It is.
Okay.
Though there will still be some projects that will require a licensed and bonded contractor that we will not be providing, things like electrical panels, we won't be doing with a housing repair technician.
Well, I appreciate the leadership that you're providing in this area because some of these projects, if you can get them within the first couple of weeks, as opposed to waiting a half a year or longer, that gets big.
Some are becoming issues, absolutely.
Yes, and I think that it makes people happier and I just, I just think it's wonderful. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or?
Yes. I'd still like to see the application form that we use for the grants that we, the 30 grants or so that we, we end up awarding, a blank application, because I want to see on there how the council's policy is listed as it relates to the emphasis that we place on how the money should be spent.
An application for the minor housing repair program?
Nope. For the 30 grants or so that we award with the matching, the funds that we provide.
That's outside of this.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Yes, that is not connected to CDBG.
Correct.
But I'd be happy to provide you our supplemental application.
Also, I'd like to see the spread that we've talked about where those grants are listed and percentage that the grant represents of the agency's total budget is listed and the number of people that that particular grant is going to serve.
So I compiled a spreadsheet and I, and I sent it along in September after our last meeting.
Okay. And did it have the percentage? Did it have the percentage that the grant represented of the total budget? I'd like another copy of that.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Or you can continue if you have more to, to share with us.
Very briefly, just the next steps are that if there, is there, if there's any council feedback that you would like to have incorporated into the final draft, I'm happy to do so. You'll see in the current draft that we have not received public comments up until this point. Certainly, the public hearing was conducted at a council meeting and we did not receive public comments then. We also sent it out to our agencies for comments and had a meeting, a community meeting and a meeting of our human services committee, but also had a public hearing for comments. So we are still in that draft comment stage. However, our public comment period closes on December 2nd, so what will come before you for the December 3rd council meeting will reflect the full and final document with any comments that come in during that time period.
And can we see the comments or are we not allowed to see the comments? Is that just directed to the committee?
You absolutely can see them. At this point, we have not received them, but there is actually a section of the annual action plan that lists out any comments that we receive.
It would be nice for us council members to hear what our constituents have to say as well.
Absolutely. It is, it is a part of the action plan that we submit to HUD, so that will be a part of your packet for next week. And you do have a draft of Resolution 5394, which would adopt the 2019 CDBG action plan. That will come before you at the December 3rd council meeting. Once we have received that resolution, we will submit to HUD so that we can begin to incur costs in 2019. incur costs in 2019.
Yes.
Just thank you and look forward to hearing you on December 3rd.
Thank you. And next, on the regional homelessness.
Yes, Mayor Backus, could you join me up here for this part since? So in your packet, there has been, as you know, there's been a lot of work on the regional level relating to homelessness, affordable housing, and the like. And as part of the expanded effort of One Table, there has been widespread conversation between King County, the city of Seattle, and essentially the Sound Cities Association cities on what a regional governance model might look like as we address the homelessness crisis. Mayor Backus, of course, has been kind of leading that effort along with Renton Council member Ed Prince and...
Bellevue Mayor John Chalmanac.
And so there's a few things that we've included in your packet by way of reference, and then we'll kind of give you an overview of everything that's going on. The first thing that you see is a letter that Mayor Backus sent to herself and others. It was essentially to the One Table group on behalf of Sound Cities Association indicating that as the cities outside of Seattle, our priorities are a little bit different than what Seattle may or may not have. And listed out some of the priority thoughts, especially around accountability within whatever governance model might be out there. You've heard Mayor speak often on accountability for the clients, accountability for the service providers, and accountability to funders as things kind of take shape across the region. The next couple of things you may or may not have seen in certain SCA meetings, and this is where I will defer a little bit to the Mayor and Councilmember Holman as well, who attended the meeting regarding the homeless, what they're called the homeless system action and accountability system, and some work that's being done with some consultants throughout the region and what a large-scale governance model might look like. The last thing is the draft MOU that was executed earlier this year between Seattle and King County regarding kind of aligning objectives and funding priorities. What was discovered in the One Table process is that oftentimes Seattle and King County might be overlapping funding sources or might be going in a couple of maybe opposite directions on something, on how things are being funded and managed in relation to homelessness. So with that, Mayor Backus, I'll defer to you on kind of where the conversations have gone to this point.
So Dana gave a really good overview. There have been, and Dana and Joy both have given quite a bit of their time to working on these issues. When it was One Table, there were daily, if not hourly, check-ins between King County and Seattle and Auburn. And it wasn't the most fluid of processes, I will be honest with you. The way that it was set up and some of the expectations, things didn't go as smoothly as we would have liked them to go. And so the, I think, personally, I think there were some artificial deadlines that were set to make things happen, and they were a little more arbitrary, and so some of them were pushed back. During that process is when Executive Constantine and Mayor Durkin decided to sign their MOU. And their goal was to have a governance structure in place by December of this year. That governance structure, as you would imagine, as a regional governance structure, is not something that's easily done for a number of reasons. And so those discussions are ongoing. It's not just electeds around the table. You also have some of the foundations, the Seattle Foundation, the Rakes Foundation, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Ballmer Foundation, Vulcan. And so, and also including those, excuse me, with lived experience. So that we are trying to pull in from all different areas, what does a regional governance model look like? And at the last meeting, there are several consulting groups working on this. See, Focus Strategies was hired by the city of Seattle about three years ago. There was a report that came out, the Barb Poppy Report, and that was on eliminating, a lot of it was around eliminating shelters and just having permanent supportive housing. But we know that hasn't really occurred yet, and the need for shelter is still great. And then there is Future Laboratories, who, Focus Strategies is now hired by Vulcan to review that Poppy Report. Future Laboratories was hired by Seattle, and we have been having ongoing conversations with them. They have been here to try and put together, I'll find my notes from one of those meetings, a theory of change. You'd think it might be easy to understand that we would all have the same theory of change for what needs to take place, if we do this, then this, then this. But identifying that within all of the different organizations out there who have the best of intentions of ending homelessness, there was no shared theory of change. And so that's one of the things that Future Laboratories has been working on. And also with All Home. So you know, you probably know that I am on the board representing Sound Cities Association for All Home, and they are responsible for the COC or the Coordination or Continuation of Care, Continuum of Care. And we just recently found out exactly what the responsibilities are of an organization for the continuum of care. Sounds a little odd, but we had someone who actually wrote the laws, the rules at HUD, who has since left HUD and is a private consultant, CHS, come in to tell us exactly what the responsibilities of All Home are. It was far more focused than what the All Home staff had been trying to have us do. And so we will be responsible in the continuum of care on those emergency services and the HUD dollars that are flowing into this. So it's roughly 20% to 25% of the dollars that are being spent on homelessness right now, which is no small amount. But at least now we know what our focused job is supposed to be. And once a year, our All Home Board is supposed to submit our prioritized list of funding recipients with that continuum of care dollars. And so with the governance, the regional governance model, I will tell you that while King County and the city of Seattle and the All Home interim director all gave a thumbs up to moving forward with that model, SCA, so Councilmember Prince and myself, and actually one of the gentlemen who has lived experience, gave it the thumb sideways. Yes, we like the idea, but we can't fully support it yet because we don't have the details, right? We don't know exactly what that governance structure would look like. We know that Seattle and King County believe that they should be the chairs, but what dollars are going to be determined in this governance structure? Is it the CDBG funding that the cities currently receive? I will tell you that the SCA cities are saying no. And so what dollars exactly are going to be included in there? So there are some behavioral health dollars, but it would not be all behavioral health dollars. There is the crisis funding that would be included. There would be some of the county levy dollars. And so that's where we know that the cities outside of Seattle should have a voice at the table because those dollars are coming from our residents. And so we will continue to fight for having either a chair or a co-chair from Sound Cities Association, the 38 cities outside of Seattle that are within King County. We have been talking about, for most of us, the Puget Sound Regional Council. You know that it's a rotating chair from the four different counties that are involved, or even Sound Transit, where it's the three counties that are involved, and the chairs rotate between those three or four counties. We prefer a model like that so that we, as smaller cities, don't get swallowed up in the process and that we have a say in the dollars that are being spent. One of the things that I've said all along is what works in Auburn probably isn't going to work in Seattle and probably isn't going to work in Bellevue. And conversely, what works in Bellevue or Seattle is probably not going to work in Auburn. And so we should be able to identify what's going to work best within our own communities. Dana and I about two months ago, almost two months ago now, flew down for the day to Los Angeles with a large group. It was Executive Constantine, Mayor Durkin, Councilmember Prince, some of the funders, All Home staff, the consultants. And we met with Mayor Garcetti and one of their county electeds. They don't have a county executive, they have a board. And so we were listening to what they were doing in LA and LA County because of the tremendous problem with homelessness that they faced there. And for years, it sounds like the electeds weren't really up to doing much, and so the residents actually had a bit of an uprising, if you will, and said, "You have to do something. We elected you, you have to do something." And so they put together a ballot measure, didn't pass the first time, but a ballot measure that over a 10-year period of time will raise 3.5 billion, with a B, dollars to fight homelessness in LA County. Now, they've had this in place for two years, so that $700 million that's already been allocated, they have had a 4% decrease in homelessness. So I'm hoping that this is a ramp up because 700,000 or 700 million and a 4% decrease might not be the odds that you want to go out and tout. But I think there's going to be some buildup there. But what they did present and what I think could work as part of the regional governance model, if we move forward with it, is that they had these COGS, they call them, so Communities of Governance. So let's say, they had, I think, 11 COGS in LA County, which has 88 cities. We might have six, to where South King County or Southwest King County, which we're considered a part of, would have their own governance structure, right? The dollars would come from the overarching governance, but we would have the dollars available to determine what works best in our community. And Seattle would have their own opportunity, and the East Side would have their opportunity to do what fits best for them. So I'm supportive of that type of a model, as long as it doesn't get too bureaucratic. Just wanted to get a little bit of your sense on whether you could be supportive of a regional governance model. Granted, we don't have the details yet, we will keep you posted on them. And rest assured that I would never be this way until all of those details have been identified.
I think that when we look at the mobility rate of our population, and we look at what you have found in that our homeless are probably different than Seattle, there are some similarities, but there are some big differences, that the COG approach or the regionalized, subregional my only hesitation is that it doesn't become a bureaucratic thing where we just run up costs that go. But I do like, I find that our neighbors can't, in federal way, some of our neighbors we work really well with, and that would be, and then we could steal the good ideas from Seattle if they happen to have any.
Or they could take them from us.
Of course, but I think that that, and I think we could do more with the money.
Sorry.
Go ahead and then I'll, Mr. Holman.
Oh, well, you know, I think you all know that we have a pretty strong belief in holding everyone accountable here, as Dana was saying, whether it's the funders, the service providers, or those receiving services. When we were in LA and Mayor Garcetti was talking about accountability, and so I thought, "Good, I'm going to see what they're doing." And I asked him, "Believe in accountability, transparency? Are you holding the funders, the service providers, and the recipients accountable?" "No!" "No?" "No, they've had too much crisis, they can't be expected to be held accountable." I beg to differ. There are the chronically homeless, let's be honest, the chronically homeless that we will never be able to fund it or... There will always be homelessness, right? We are never going to 100% eradicate homelessness. And there are those chronically homeless that until we find a way to house them so that they are not in a business owner's doorway, they are not laying on the sidewalks, they are not out begging for money and getting in, confronting people, until we can find a way to reduce that, there is not a single resident, I personally believe, that's going to think we're doing anything near what we should be doing on homelessness. And so that's what we need to focus on. We know that there are organizations out there that are helping the single mother of three who lives in her car. We know that those organizations exist. I will tell you that I think a majority of our residents have lost compassion, and I am not saying that in a bad way. I am saying that they have lost compassion because they are tired of seeing people lying on the sidewalks, asking, begging for money, or doing other things that we probably shouldn't speak about on camera. So we need to find the best way to move forward for the chronically homeless and help get them into treatment, help get them housing, and help our residents have safe existences, as well as those chronically homeless. They need to be safe. So there'll be a lot of lobbying that needs to go on, there will need to be some potential changes at the state level, even on involuntary, right? If someone is not of sound mind to be able to say, "Yes, I need treatment," how are we going to be able to help them get that treatment? So a lot of questions, a lot of...
From this month's Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association. Now, in general, this is going to come back next month at PIC, the Public Issues Committee. And with each city's council's approval, then PIC will approve it to go to the Board of SCA. I will tell you that the general consensus around the table was supportive of the action plan, but questioned the governance structure, just as you outlined. Now, I'm going to put names in because all of us have been on committees with these people, and it will give you an idea of where the ideas are coming from. Ed Prince of Renton, John Stokes of Bellevue, and Toby Nixon of Kirkland, all were supportive of the plan. All questioned the... All questioned the governance structure. In particular, Toby Nixon was skeptical of a governance plan that was too much like Sound Transit's. So, I would love to hear what Toby would say about your COG structure. And I think he would be generally, as an East Side community, would be much more akin to that sort of governance structure than he would a rotating-chair structure like Sound Transit.
There will still have to be an overarching governance.
Yes.
So, that's where I would prefer that we have a rotation so that the voices of Sound Cities are heard.
But the general consensus at the table was, they like the plan. They need work on the governance before they'll move on it.
What I worry about is that we'll have a COG, and then that COG's gonna have to have a sub-director that reports to the rotating director that then in turn has to have staff and all of that. And so, we're gonna have to have some administration that we keep it at a minimum and so that the most of the money goes to... I also applaud you on being so slow. I know, but we're trying to foresee problems. We're not gonna be like LA or whatever and then just be throwing money at fires, though they do have a lot of fires. But I think that by careful planning, we will, in the long run, though we're impatient and people's lives are at stake, I think we'll end up being able to serve more appropriately. And so, I know that it's painfully slow, but it should have a payoff.
Thank you.
I know that LA is still having problems with their homelessness because as we were there at the conference, walking from hotel to the conference, they were laying in the middle of our, as we're walking. It didn't, Salvation Army was right there, and everybody congregated around the Salvation Army, but they were laying right in the middle of the crosswalks and by the conference. And so, they haven't really done that good of a job.
I don't know where you stayed, but I didn't see any.
I did. Every night.
It's a big problem, and for those of you, we've probably all heard the term "skid row." That's where it originated, was in LA. And so, it is a huge problem. I will tell you, and we did have the philanthropic groups with us. Connie Ballmer was there, Tricia Rakes, someone from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Those philanthropic organizations and the business community worked together, and they play a huge role in that structure that they have down in LA. There are things that the business community and the philanthropic community can do that you know we, as government, can't, and vice versa. And so, it's really a strong cohesive group. And the philanthropic and the business community actually became cohesive before the electeds did.
Well, when I was there at Santa Monica during that tour, Tony, the council gentleman, took us by their homeless shelter that's just been completed within the last two and a half years and is a one-stop shop, and it's a huge three-story, three or four-story high building. And they've got apartments up there for dorms for women, family, and men. And he's, I, we didn't see any homelessness, and we drove around that whole area. And we were gonna stop at that homeless shelter because I really wanted to see what it was, but we didn't have time. So...
There are a lot of good models out there. And so, there has been a redesign, the new timeline, as I think is in your packet, shows March of 2019 as the critical assessment of current systems completed to determine the new governance structure. I think you all have this in your packets. Any thoughts or comments you want me to take back? The next governance structure, well, let's see. Expert review panel with advisory committee and executive leadership group. That's the title of the next meeting. It's, yeah, well, this actually comes from Focus Strategies, I believe.
Well, Nancy, whatever happened to our homeless task force that you started several years ago? Do we still have that?
So, you might recall that they came and gave an update about a year ago.
Right.
And we can bring them back together. I will tell you that at some point, we are going to need to be, to talk about more of a permanent solution for a shelter in Ray of Hope Resource Center. So, that will be coming to you next year to start talking about, what are we going to do once temporary is coming to an end?
Can these individuals be part of this?
Part of that discussion?
This discussion?
Probably not. It's a pretty finite group of people that have been pulled together for this. But I can certainly, you know, bring back comments and thoughts from everyone. And so, if any of you have any thoughts that you want me to share, let's see. The expert review panel will be holding a series of meetings in Seattle on the Fourth and Fifth, presenting preliminary findings, articulating what people can expect during the final report presentation in March, and generally engaging in a dialogue regarding what they are doing and learning.
As I mentioned last time, at the council meeting, the mayor, the new National League of Cities president, has formed a homeless task force as well. And there's one lady from Seattle, a councilwoman, that's on that task force. So, I was just wondering, I don't see her name on here, so I was just wondering if this...
Completely separate.
Completely separate.
Completely separate. The mayor of Seattle is the one working on this elected group. I will tell you that Dana and I are flying out to DC in the morning. And not only are we meeting with our Congress representatives, but we will also be meeting with NLC on homelessness. So, we're looking forward to that meeting and seeing maybe what we can do to assist or what they can do to assist us.
That's why I immediately, when I found out they did that, I wanted to know who our representative from Seattle was and how she was selected and stuff. So, yes?
Nancy, I wanted to thank you for giving, there's a lot of hidden things that we don't hear as a council, and I appreciate you being forefront and giving your latest knowledge, Nancy.
Thank you.
You too, Dana.
I will always throw in my own opinions, too, as you know, on what I think is working and what isn't.
Well, like you said, we need to be transparent. And our constituents are, you know, they are getting insensitive with all the people standing in the middle of the road, begging, or sitting there, almost laying in front of you. So, and it's not that we're not compassionate people, but it's just that.
And, you know, there are some rulings that have been handed down by the Ninth Circuit that say that you can't really ask someone to move unless you have a place where they can go. And so, that is part of, you know, identifying where we have a shelter, where we can provide them with opportunities.
Well, I did that, and I got reprimanded for doing that. A man was in the middle of the road, and he almost jumped in front of me. So, I asked him if he wanted some money. I told him I wouldn't give him any money, and I asked him if he knew about our shelter, and he said he wasn't aware. So, I asked him to jump in my car, and I drove him, I drove him to, no! But I saw him, I'd just seen him here later, I'd just seen him. And he thanked me for doing that because he got the help that he needed to get. So, I know I got in trouble for doing that, and so, but I felt that he was safe.
He was left out.
News at 11.
You have a very big heart, Councilmember. I would encourage you to consider your own safety in the future, however.
Anyways, I just, he did, I did see him later on, and he thanked me for the help that he got. So, any further questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Holman was at the PIC meeting on affordable housing.
Yeah, we just, a lot of the statements were combined.
Right.
Okay, affordable housing.
Yeah, so, this was added late last week. There is a potential future action coming out of Sound Cities Association regarding a regional affordable housing task force action plan, and is up for consideration and hoping to have it before you all, before it, so that the mayor or Councilmember Holman can take your feelings back to SCA, so...
On that, Nancy, are, Mayor Nancy, are you going to be having a survey for us to fill out? Is there a possibility of us, you know, because sometimes we're not willing to speak out, and maybe through a survey or something, we could be more...
This group not speak out?
It's, I would... This group, you're talking about this group? The ones around this table? Afraid to speak out? Okay. More asking questions?
More questions, yes.
I, now, John, do you want to talk about what was shared at PIC?
Just what I've already stated in the names that I gave. It was the governance model. We're providing a lot of the money that's going to fund this in federal, state, and local taxes. We need a voice in how it's going to be spent on a problem, and we need input on how it's spent because it's a regional problem. Our problems in the South End may be different than the problems on the East Side or the North End.
So, the same comments about affordable housing?
Yes.
Affordable housing task force?
Exactly. That, it's the governance of...
Who's going to oversee?
Who's going to oversee? And if it's just Dow Constantine and Mayor Durkin, then who's going to speak for the housing needs of those of us in the South End? Remember when affordable housing became a, well, the seven years that I've been here, we've been talking about affordable housing. But they didn't want to give us credit for our existing affordable housing, and they wanted us to take on a zero base. And that wasn't fair to the South End, whereas that same measuring stick was not the same in Bellevue. They don't have hundred-year-old housing in Bellevue. Hundred years ago, they were a chicken farm, literally. So, we need to be, have specific control over it. And the, if you take the metrics of all the suburban cities, we have more people and generate more money than the city of Seattle by itself. I wrote a piece for the National League of Cities blog, and I took it on a little bit humorously, but, you know, we build Boeing airplanes in Auburn and in Renton and in other cities, but there's no Boeing airplane built in the city of Seattle. Bill Gates lives on Mercer Island, and Microsoft is in Redmond. Kenworth Truck is in Bellevue and Renton. So, we generate the money that's providing the taxes and the revenue for this. We also need an equal share of the control of how that money is spent in our regions. That's the bottom line from PIC, and my personal opinion, too.
Dana, do you have any further?
Well, what's before you, the last thing in your packet from Sound Cities Association, is the draft recommendations that came out of the King County Task Force that was led by King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci and Kenmore Mayor David Baker. And this task force has been working since this summer, July, I believe, last summer. So, about a year and a half of work surrounding the regional affordable housing issues. And there are, is a set of goals listed. If you, that starts on page 191. And those goals range from creating affordable housing policies to focusing on transit-oriented development and mass transit and accessibility. There are some capital investments listed to the tune of about $384 million on page 194. And other actions, recommended actions as far as zoning and how cities might write policies and plans into their comprehensive plans and things in the future. So, the, on page 186, the potential action is there in the gray box, as you're used to seeing from Sound Cities Association. And that is basically requesting SCA membership to read through the recommendations and provide some sort of blessing, one way or the other. Bless it or don't bless it, I guess.
May I ask, when did Sound City Association really get politically involved?
So, this isn't really politically involved. These are, the PIC, the Public Issues Committee, does take on these types of issues. So, actually, SCA stays out of a lot of politically-charged issues, such as, let's say, street line jail camps, right? Because there are winner cities, not Auburn, and there are loser cities like Kent and Auburn. And so, SCA does not take a position on anything that's controversial or has winner cities and loser cities. So, we do take on difficult topics because we want to be represented in those regional discussions. And so, when King County, like on this task force, when King County created it, we fight to make sure that SCA has a seat in that table.
Any further questions? Okay. What do you recommend, Dana?
Anything?
Thank you.
It does. Comes back. So, we really need some sort of approval from this body to be able to vote for or against it at PIC or abstain.
So, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I mean, having, you know, reviewed this, not as extensively as I would like, but, you know, I do see some really positive goals in this plan, particularly around protecting existing affordable housing and some tenant protections for renters, protecting existing communities of color, low-income communities from displacement, and gentrifying communities. I think this might not be our biggest problem, but, I mean, it is a problem regionally.
Well, you and I just encountered some problems with tenants and management.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, I mean, I would certainly be supportive of this.
So, you would want us tonight, John, to say who would support this, or?
We can't do it tonight, but we can certainly speak our heart tonight.
My only concern is that when we have these types of committees, groups developed, it becomes a perpetual committee that has a lot of things on paper and nothing gets done. So, whatever we do, we gotta make sure that action really happens and things get done. And like the governance thing that Mayor was talking about, we need to definitely be a strong player in that. be a strong player in that part of the organization as well. The other thing is, again, we have all these different groups that are doing these different things and it's, once again, has to be coming together in a common vision. For example, once again, look again at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's, you know, legislative priorities and there's a lot of things in there that are in here. And how do we bring the information in from those other organizations and groups to get that alignment and to make sure we're saying the same thing at the same time, all the time? Because what's happening is we're on these diverse tangents and we do not have a common voice and that, if we're going forward to legislators, for example, that's confusing to them. So, this has to be something that is solid and I would expect that we really get to that point with the group that's on the PIC because, you know, you know who they are and what they represent and they all have strong opinions as well. So, I just think we really need to be very forceful in how we go forward this. And if we agree as a council to go forward and support this, I think we need some crafted language that states our firm position to make sure things happen in a defensible measure and defiable way.
As, as we put our name on, on it, yeah.
Can I just point out two on page 187?
And then you, I go.
Sorry. Updates to the action plan since October. At its meeting, the task force amended the action plan in response to PIC feedback to clearly state that the recommendations of the task force are not mandates for cities. Rather, the task force recognizes that the housing market in different parts of the county will call for different solutions to most effectively preserve and increase the supply of affordable housing. So, just, just so you know that this is not a mandate, so hopefully that might help ease your minds a little bit.
I put down three items. I want to ensure that we get our fair share. I also want to see that what we've gained in the past, where we get credit for existing affordable housing, that we maintain that credit. And that finally, we need attention for preservation. So, there's got to be some accommodations for preservation.
And it does mention preservation in here, too, so you're spot on.
And I, that's good that you came up with those three items because we definitely need to make sure that Auburn does get our share of our money and the credit of supporting this. Any further comments? Yes, Nancy?
If, if I could, sometimes we talk about things like sub-area equity and like best starts for kids levy and we wanted to make sure that we got our fair share. If we just got our fair share, we wouldn't be getting much, right? So, sometimes, sometimes these ballot measures and sometimes when the funding is allocated, we don't want to just ask for our fair share. You know what I'm saying?
We want to represent.
We do.
We want what we need, right? There are some areas that may not need the funding, but South King County, where we know we need those preservation dollars. We, we want more. Sometimes we want more than what our residents contribute via taxes, right? We don't, South King County does not contribute as much of a task base on, on this funding in some cases as the East Side does because some of it's based on property taxes, right? So, the housing value might be lower here. We have a more affordable housing, we have more affordable housing base than an $800,000 home on the East Side. So, it gets to be a little bit of a sore subject for the East Side because they're contributing more, but not getting as much. But it needs to be that the funding goes where the need is. And so, in that regard, South King County should be receiving more than what we're paying into it.
Yes. So, I'll take back my "our fair share" and say what you said, which is, the funding needs to go where the need is. And that's, right. Fund the need, that's right on.
Yes.
I think one other thing in this document here that's prepared, this is part of our responsibility as a subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, looking at incentives for doing this work because in many cases, it's more expensive to build affordable housing and developers shy away from it because it costs them more for a lot of different reasons, government regulations, prevailing wage, whatever, a lot of different reasons. So, I think folding something in here that also looks at the incentivizing process is important. Again, I'm, I'm working on that individually through the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. It's part of my responsibility for three different items and this one is looking at local incentives. So, it's not going to happen without having some sort of an incentive program.
And King County Councilmember Balducci has been trying to, she's had to cancel meetings and she's had Senator Claude and I as representatives from my table and, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, so hopefully we will have a chance to get with her before this all goes back.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good session.
I'll turn it over to you.
You've got it, kid. All right.
Don't step on my toes no more while we're dancing.
Maybe we're even. All right, well, this shouldn't take very much time. We're going to talk about the matrix a little bit. I think we've added the tenant protection measures last time. And I think we, we're also, we've been briefed on the identity theft process by council and...
Not everybody, still working on a couple more briefings.
Pardon?
Still working on a couple more briefings.
Couple more briefings. Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
Good, thank you. So, I guess we do have a little bit more time to go on here. Have we determined any dates or anything, or is it still going to be catch as catch can?
Soon as practicable.
I have one more to add, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I would like, I, I'm, you know, I'm on the domestic violence task force and that's something that I'm very passionate about and we don't have representation on that. I know that we have a clerk who helps our domestic violence person, but I really feel that we need to have an advocate. We used to have Shelley and we really need that in our city, being, going to the meetings and stuff and seeing the advocates there, taking care of the people. And the reason why I'm so concerned about this is we've already had two murders in our city and I just feel that we don't need a clerk to be our advocate for our, the ladies that really need the help, that we need a person that really understands domestic violence. And this was shared with me at one of my meetings, that those women that are domestic advocates, I actually have the training and they have the background and I know we have one in place right now, but I see her more as a clerk.
She's not a clerk.
Well, I've been told that she does the clerk part of, for our prosecutor attorney. So, I, I would just like to see if we could add an advocate in our city.
Just to clarify, the position in my office is domestic violence paralegal under state law. The prosecutor's office is required to provide specific notice and things to victims of domestic violence and my paralegal's job is to make sure that our office complies with the requirements of state law in that area. We also currently fund as part of two, I believe, of our human services contracts, some domestic violence advocacy services, they're not centrally coordinated. So, that, that's the current status of what we're doing now. The only other comment is that I'm just looking at council rules about something else and it requires a consensus of council to add something to the matrix, so we would be looking to see at least four heads nodding on that issue.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Which side are we on?
We're over here.
Okay.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Along those same lines, Dana puts out an update weekly, Fridays. And it's very good. It keeps us informed on some of the hot items. I don't see legal there. I'd like to see legal give us a weekly report. Domestic violence as an example.
We don't comment on pending cases. We don't comment on, it's inappropriate for us to comment on pending criminal cases. So, whereby we could provide reports at some point, possibly quarterly would be efficient on, like our prosecutor's office gave you an annual report for, I believe, 2017, but the reason you don't see something from legal is most of what we do is attorney-client privileged. We don't talk about it.
I understand that. I understand that now, clear. But we should still have some type of a legal update.
Let's talk more about what you would want to see in that, perhaps?
Yeah.
And, and what you would all like to see in that.
Counsel people that have gone to jail.
I can tell you what we do, but you see most of my, you see most of my work every week. We bring you ordinances and resolutions.
Well...
But that's a little bit different.
Councilmember Trout Manuel, are we talking about adding an FTE in some department?
Yes.
That is dedicated to that purpose?
Locally, just strictly for domestic violence and for them to work out of the police department with our detective. I haven't even met with our detective since Shelley has left. We used to meet with our detective, we used, he even used to go to some of the meetings with me, but since we no longer have had Shelley, it's just been, it's just been me going to the domestic violence meetings and stuff like that. It would be nice, again, to have somebody who is more affiliated with the domestic violence part of it.
So, we do fund, as the city attorney said, some of the funding that you approve goes for domestic violence victims. That's more in their area of expertise. I, I won't get into whether the person that was in the role before was doing the job that was supposed to be done or not, but the role that Gloria is playing as the paralegal, domestic violence paralegal, is what the job description is and has been.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Well, I think that we can find maybe some middle ground if we can get some people to, for people to say we want to look at it. In our human services stuff, there are support advocacy groups that we're currently funding. An example is the one that I can't stand the most, which is the East Side, East Side Attorneys, whatever. They did a presentation at Kiwanis that you missed and all that they do is when referrals are made to them, is provide advocacy. So, maybe Dana could pull together a list of how, what our paralegal is doing to support people that are in need as it relates to getting the advocacy done, because I think we have some, we have some advocacy in what we're paying for and I know that East Side does it because they do a couple hundred people, not all from Auburn, but there's got to be other organizations.
There are and they're, they're listed in, out under domestic violence in the, in the who funders.
You know, so...
Okay. Then another thing I wanted to see, if we could have Sheed Pearson and Mike be able to do a presentation. We haven't had a presentation from the police department. If they can give us an update on what's been going on and what they have going on right now. What were we talking about?
Domestic violence?
On domestic violence, yeah.
I would support a presentation like that in the future sometime.
Is that the general consensus of the council?
Any knowledge is good knowledge.
Sure, yeah.
Deputy Mayor, did we also get, did we also get consensus on adding, the question of adding a position of a domestic violence advocate to the matrix to consider? I didn't see four heads nodding. So, in the absence of that, that doesn't get added to the...
I don't think we did. Yeah, I don't think we did.
What would be a good name for something like this?
Well, you know, it was kind of nice to have an advocate go with me to the meetings because I have been feeling that here, I have been the advocate, I've been the domestic violence person and we go, I go to all these meetings and they all have an advocate with them and they share, you know, some of the stuff that's going on. I have nothing to share because I don't, I don't get the report or anything like that. Margot?
I said, why can't you send one of the attorneys with you?
Well, they were coming and then they'd stop. And like he said, they're very busy people, individuals, and so they need her to be there with them, so that's where we're at. That's why I say we don't have an advocate. We have a...
Domestic violence paralegal part of prosecution.
Paralegal that has to be there in court with her prosecutor attorney.
I have the DVI meeting on my calendar, so I'll be going next week, okay?
Councilmember Dickerson, are we looking at an agenda item on the matrix that basically says domestic violence slash advocacy report update that we're looking at?
Could we do that?
We can prepare anything you like. We have some parameters, I mean, if we want a summary or what, what we've done, where we are, reports of the last week, month, whatever, we'll do whatever you like.
I would like some, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. This is just a...
You sit over there.
This is my...
Go to your room.
This is my committee. I apologize.
I think we just need to be briefed on what we do, how we do it, and what some of the results are. This is just internally how it works.
Yeah, great.
Is that clear now? Are there any other issues that we'd like to bring up as a result of the matrix?
Bobby better clear it, too.
I'll meet her outside in about five minutes.
I apologize. That is just such a...
The woodshed, yeah. Okay, well, with that, I have no other items before the council. We are adjourned.